Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, July 3, 2024. In this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding. Alto President are Council President Deb Rule, councilors Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Is Councilman Espiro joining us virtually?
Not at the moment. He isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the presiding officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel in the room. We'll be serving as Sergeant Arms at this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn taking time away from his day off to come in. So thank you, Chief Kuhn. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next announcements and reports, we'll first go through mayor and council announcements, and then we're going to have a slight interruption. We'll have Mandy Evans come present from the Better Together Animal Alliance, and then we'll proceed with staff announcements and reports. Mayor's announcements, first council members in public. We did send off, I sent off a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers, copied the Bonneville Power Administration concerning the Albion Falls spillway. I believe I copied all council members on that. You know, basically asking for a clear plan on how they intend to address the failures and deficiencies there and asking them to prioritize collaboration with Bonneville Power. Next, you know, tomorrow marks six months sitting in the seat and for Kyle and Pam, congratulations. I just want to thank the council and staff and the public for your support and helping us work on these priorities. You know, it's, it's been a quick six months, but we have worked through some organizational restructuring. And that's pretty exciting. We are working on the wastewater treatment plant. You'll see hopefully at the next meeting, a contract for an engineering firm to do the preliminary engineering study on the wastewater plant replacement. That's going to include both the treatment technology and the phasing of those improvements. That work will be completed by the end of the year. And for just the timeline at that point, we submit to the Idaho DEQ, something called a LOI, Letter of Intent. They review that. They then ask us to come up with the funding methodology to pay for the improvements. And it's likely we'll go out to a request to the voters in May for a bond election to pay for those improvements. If that fails, there are other processes we can pursue. I'm hopeful that the public will support those improvements. And tying on to that, you may notice in this set of bills or maybe the next, we have settled, reached a settlement agreement with the EPA and paid some fines, which were in part due to our exceedance of water quality into the river from the wastewater plant, E. coli. So I'm hopeful that over the next six months, we can, six to eight months, we can educate the community on the age and need for that wastewater plant replacement. It's not new to anyone, and it's a very old plant well beyond its useful life. And I believe council member Howarth got to tour today, and prior to his tour, there was yet another pipe burst sinkhole that occurred out there. So just thanks to Devon Hall and the team that keep that thing running and keep the water quality as best as they can. I'm super excited that our Dura Patch and Crack Sealer have arrived. And as of next Tuesday, when the training folks come to show the crew how to use it, those will be working throughout town. If you're not familiar with that terminology, the Crack Sealer will basically drip liquid tar on the cracks on our decent roads to prevent water from flowing in and freezing and thawing and breaking them up. And the Dura Patch is spits out coated, clean aggregate rock. And it's primarily designed to fill large potholes, and it does a better job than, you know, hand filling those with asphalt, but it can also do some flat, some of those street cuts that we have from those sewer laterals that have been cut in. We're going to try to test it a little bit, see how it works on those. We believe that it will allow, the Dura Patch will allow those, some of those bumps to be smoothed out. I want to emphasize that these two pieces of equipment are a Band-Aid for our streets. After going through the budget, which will be presented to you next meeting, it's quite clear that we do not have even the possibility of solving our street problem. I spoke on the radio last week and sorry to shock anyone, but I will be bringing forward a plan to the council for a local option tax this fall, seeking a 1% retail sales tax on similar items that were taxed when we had one for War Memorial Field. And it is my hope that the public and the council will support moving forward with that so we can provide a one-time solution to our residents so they never have to drive on roads in their current condition again. So those details are to follow. We do have the parade lineup for the Fourth of July celebration tomorrow at 10:00 AM. So please come out and there's a child's children's parade prior to that. But please come out and celebrate our community, enjoy the festivities, and of course fireworks at City Beach at sundown. For new members of the community, be aware that there is a perimeter around the fireworks launching area. So if you do have boats moored in the windbag marina, you will have limited access to those boats. So either get out before the fireworks start or plan on not getting to your boat for a couple hours. Jason Welker will talk about some of the exciting positions we filled in the planning and community planning development department. And I want to also make sure everyone's aware, we do have our comprehensive plan hearing on the 17th. After numerous meetings of this council and prior councils, the draft is available for public review. There should be a press release coming out in the B shortly with information on how the public can access that plan. That plan will serve as our kind of guidance for the next 15 years. And it's really the baseline for directing our activity and our actions at the city. So the hearing is really, Councilwoman Duquette had a question, the hearings for the public to come and either affirm and support the elements of the plan, or if we have missed something or are off track for the public to let the council know that we've missed something or are off track. At which the council's pleasure, you have the opportunity to maybe amend the plan and depending on the scale of that amendment, send it back for further planning commission comments and review or adopt the plan. Once that plan's adopted, you know, it will start a years-long process of looking at our zoning. And the council is going to be faced with the question of where do we prioritize the in-house staff to start working on that zoning? Is it our residential zones and dealing with ADUs and those aspects, or is it our commercial zone? And that activity will get going as soon as we get that plan adopted. So exciting times ahead. And with that, I would ask, are there any council announcements?
Do you?
Councilwoman Duquette?
It appears I always have. First, I just wanted to say on the wastewater plant, if the public is allowed to tour, you will get that bond.
Oh.
In my opinion. And you did a great job on the radio. I listened. I was surprised you were on. I always listen to Karen.
You can always learn, learn from your mistakes, but I'm.
What I wanted to share was, I don't know if everybody is familiar with what's been going on with West Bonner County School District for the past couple of years, bad, bad dealings going on. Right now, when their levy didn't pass, they had the Spartan Booster Club started an activities fund to help raise $150,000. That's required for the school district to save programs at the junior and high school, their sports, their academia, their honor society, their leadership, their yearbook, their band, their drama, instrumental and vocal club. There is a 75,000 match that an anonymous donor will match if they collect 75,000. That will give them 150,000 to go to the school board to save these programs. It's still going to be pay to play. They're still in trouble. But I just wanted to share, if anybody has friends or relatives who have not deep pockets, but pockets to share, the deadline to donate is July 17. And I said about the 75,000. They're also doing, Inovia has a donation also for more focused on the district needs, curriculum staffing. Because if anybody's been following, they're just in a bad way. And all you have to do is get online and look for the Priest River Spartan Booster Club if you're interested in helping those students. I have two grandchildren. Well, one just graduated, and I taught there for quite a while. So my heart is there. Just wanted to share if anybody else.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, along those same lines, thank you, Councilor Duquette. A big kudos to the Lions Club as well. I don't know how many years they're on right now, but certainly a lot of taking care of the fireworks down at City Beach. It is not a cheap date in doing so. They've worked incredibly hard to put on amazing shows for this community and our visitors. They are selling fireworks. If you haven't gotten your fireworks over in the Safeway parking lot, those proceeds go back to the Lions Club. And they'll be selling raffle tickets all day long. They've got a number of things they'll be raffling off tomorrow night as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Anyone else? Excellent. At this time, I'd like to call to the podium, Mandy Evans from Better Together Animal Alliance for a presentation added to the agenda by Councilman Schreiber. Good evening, Mandy.
Hello. All right. I have to take my glasses off. Sorry. So Mandy Evans with, oh, how do I do this? I can hear my song. Everybody. Okay, there we go. Yep, perfect. All right, Mandy Evans, Better Together Animal Alliance. Thank you for having me. So Better Together Animal Alliance, what we do. We're the primary animal welfare agency for Bonner County and Boundary County. We are serving the area with a variety of programs to benefit pets and the human animal bond. Dogs and cats enter our shelter either through strays that they're lost and they come to our shelter for help or owner surrendered. We hold three animal service contracts, the city of Sandpoint, city of Ponderay, and Bonner County. Annually, we serve 8,000 local animals. Though the benefits to health and welfare of Sandpoint not covered by your contracts is population control. We span neuter all animals before adoption. After discounted span neuter services to the community, we mitigate lost pets through providing free implanted microchips for dogs and cats. And we have 15 different remote microchip scanning stations throughout the area. They maintain a lost and found webpage for pets and a texting service. In the community services, we provide advice, medical care, nail trims, we help people pay their vet bills, euthanasia services, vaccines. One second. And general wellness for free or significantly discounted for the community through our helpline. We repair and assist fences. So if a dog keeps getting out, we'll go to their house and help them fix their fence. We have a trap neuter return program to reduce the feral cat population. We have a free food bank that gives out 95,000 pounds of free cat and dog food a year. And then we partner with Bonner General Health, Kinnick's Health, and Bonner County Food Bank. For Kinnick's Health and Bonner General Health, there are people in our community who need to seek medical services that require them to leave their pets, and they will not go seek services for that reason. So we will watch their animals for free. And then when necessary to protect public safety and is determined through an evaluation by a licensed veterinarian, BTAA will euthanize dangerous dogs. And all dogs entering our facility as strays are vaccinated upon intake. This protects our population in the building and our community pets. So the contracted services that we provide to Sandpoint include stray intake. So dogs that are out roaming at large that are picked up either by law enforcement or by citizens are brought into our shelter. There is a stray hold period of five days excluding weekends and holidays that's mandated through Idaho State Code. And then we provide them with an accessible temperature-controlled building 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We do medical evaluations when a pet comes in, they're vaccinated, we look for a microchip, we provide them. We do a basic medical and behavior assessment. If there is medical needs, we will provide them. Our administrative team is posting, they take the scanned microchip information, they're looking for the microchip through those databases, our databases, they post that animal on social media to try to find its owner. And we post that animal in all three of our local papers. Then our animal care takes over, and they're providing the care to the animal each day that it's in our shelter, cleaning kennel, feeding, watering, and doing enrichment. Also, part of your contract is 10-day quarantine. So if a dog were to bite you and the, they were not up on the rabies vaccine, then that dog comes into our care. We have a special area where we do confinement. The dog is cared for for 10 days, and then we have a veterinarian that approves that the dog is healthy and can be released from care. And then we do arrest property holds, which basically means that if an officer brings in a, if they arrest somebody and a dog is with them, then the dog would come to us. And then we work with the individual incarcerated individual to get that dog back home, either to them or a family member. So because we've been providing this service for about 30 years, I think that there is a, an assumption that the service we provide around stray dogs is part of our nonprofit work. It's actually a contracted service. Animal control is a function of law enforcement mandated by the state of Idaho. So stray dogs have to be picked up. They have to be housed for the five-day stray period, and then we have to find owner, their owners, an attempt to find owners is part of that. So if we'd never existed, if we had never created Better Together, the city of Sandpoint would still have to provide these services by having a facility 365 days a year and access to that facility 24 hours a day. And staff to care for the dog and all the other things that we provide would be provided by the city of Sandpoint. The statutes that this is under are listed here. There's also a bailment responsibility. So once an animal comes into our care, it is considered property. And we have a responsibility, just like your impounded car, you know, it's a bad example. But we have to make sure that its care is maintained because it's your property during that stray hold period. And then the medical needs. So if a dog comes in with its eyeball hanging out, we have to alleviate pain and suffering. Otherwise, that would be considered animal abuse. So our donors actually pay for that. That is not something billed to the city of Sandpoint. In addition, if a dog came into us that had life-threatening illness or injury, we need a veterinarian to come, release that dog and say, hey, this dog needs to be humanely euthanized. We are also providing not to you, free, that is provided and subsidized by our donors. So we're here tonight because our contract is up and we have a new billing methodology. The new billing methodology represents the true cost to BTAA to provide services. It includes the cost of staffing, insurance, utilities, professional fees, and building maintenance. The cost of doing business just simply has increased. And the additional demand on our nonprofit services to our community has increased as well. Since the cost of living has gone up, people need more assistance with their pets. That includes help with their medical bills because veterinary care has gone up as well. So the Sandpoint contract, as it stands, last year was $2,400, and we helped 99 dogs. The donors subsidize the cost of this work by $63,373. We provided information to you on this back in March. And then also, I just want to draw attention that we know that this is a huge jump, what we're asking for. So we provided you with a five-year tiered plan. So what we're asking for today, you wouldn't pay until the fifth year. Trying to be helpful. This next slide just shows the number of dogs that have been brought in and the amount that was paid by the city of Sandpoint for these services. Again, this is on us. Our billing was, you know, inaccurate or antiquated model in which is why we're changing it. So overall, our budget is $2.5 million. Our shelter, we have different departments. So just our shelter operations budget is $1,061,000. Last year, we brought in 1,572 animals. And 406 of those were stray dogs brought in through the municipal contracts. That's 26% of our intake with a total expense of $274,084. Sandpoint represents 24% of that overall stray intake at $65,773. So considerations, we know, first of all, I think it's important to note that we actually, we love our relationship with Sandpoint, and I am a Sandpoint resident. And I have to say, I think we have the best law enforcement ever. Like, they are great. And I wish all of the residents of Sandpoint could watch the officers bring dogs in because the care and consideration they provide to the animals is really amazing. We're here because we, we want to be. We're experts at what we do. We provide high-quality service. And we're hoping that we can come together and figure out a plan and work together. And we ask that if you decide that you do not want to work with us, which is your option, that you let us know by September 1st. And that's it.
Thanks, Mandy. Does council have any questions for Mandy?
Mr. Mayor, Mandy, you said something about a five-year plan. Did I miss the slide on that? Or could you maybe speak specifically to that?
Yeah, I actually, I forgot to bring my paperwork up, and I know my time was limited, so I'm going to speak roughly. The, what we put in the plan is that you would pay, I believe the plan is that you would pay half this year, and then every year would be an incremental increase until you get to year five, and that's when you would be paying the full amount.
And you said, so dogs that come in, that are counted as Sandpoint dogs, come in either through our law enforcement or a citizen of Sandpoint finds the dog in Sandpoint. Is it a Sandpoint dog or a citizen of Sandpoint?
It's a Sandpoint dog. It's where the dog was found, not who brought it in.
Okay. And then can you run through what we're paying for again? What are all the things? There's a five-day hold. So you've got the boarding of the dog?
Yeah. So you have the boarding of the dog and then all the administrative side. So you have to show that you have made every effort to find the owner. So we're doing that through social media and posting it in the paper. And it's the, all the haggadon papers that it goes into. The dog is scanned for a microchip, vaccinated upon intake. And then we're providing care. So if a dog, as an example, if a dog came, or excuse me, a dog comes in and the owner comes in the same day, then we're not required to hold the dog for five days. The requirement for five days is a property hold so that we can't transfer ownership after those five days. We can't transfer ownership within that five-day period. That makes sense.
Is there a charge to any of the citizens that bring you dogs, either in the county or Ponderay or the city?
If they're a stray dog and they bring a dog to us, no.
If it's stray, if they, if they release the dog to your custody, is there a charge for that?
Yeah, owner surrenders are $50.
Okay. What would somebody in Sandpoint do if we didn't take our dog to the Better Together Animal Alliance? What would be our alternative option? Is there a shelter in Bonners Ferry or Newport, Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls? How would that work?
Yeah, the closest shelter I think that could handle the capacity would be in Coeur d'Alene. And I think that they've reached capacity on their contracts. They're pretty much always full.
Okay. And similar contract between Coeur d'Alene and the city of Coeur d'Alene?
Yeah, they hold, there's a lot of, there's county and there's a lot of cities. I don't know which ones they hold.
Okay, thank you.
Mandy, my vague recollection, first of all, thank you for all you and your staff do. We have two lovely animals that came from your shelter. My recollection is there used to be a spot up on Great Northern, some kennels. Did the county have a facility prior to like 2010 or something? They ran out there?
Yeah, so it wasn't the county, it was us. It was on county property.
Gotcha, gotcha. And Mandy, roughly, I know you have the thrift store component, which that funds some of your operations, is that right?
So the thrift store income is funds the nonprofit side of our work.
Okay. So of your, you mentioned you have about 52 employees. How, what's the breakdown between the thrift store employees and just the shelter employees roughly?
Oh, roughly, I think the shelter side is 15 to 20. And then you've got the thrift store side. But then we also have an entire medical side. And we also have an international program that we have employees dedicated to.
And I assume some of those shelters are part-time employees, they're not full?
All of the shelter employees are full-time.
And you provide benefits, health insurance and things like that, retirement?
No. We do for, we actually, excuse me, we just started a year or so ago, I think, offering a medical reimbursement at $100 a month. And then we have a Roth or an IRA that they can contribute to.
Any other questions for Mandy from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Hi, Mandy. Quick question. So help me understand the difference between what the city was paying and what your donors were supporting. So if the city were paying its full amount, 60-some thousand dollars, I presume then you would have freed-up donor dollars. What would you do with those freed-up donor dollars?
So the money that we, that are actual nonprofit purpose, and, and I mean, even we're in the same boat with the city of Sandpoint. Nobody wants dogs coming into the shelter, right? So most of our work is dedicated to helping the community. So we have services where we go door-to-door and ask people if they have pets and how we can support them. We are providing, we get asked roughly $3,000 a week from the community members asking for assistance with their veterinary bills. We, what else? We do span neuter, we'll do free vaccines. So there's a really a lot, I think also that we're not just Sandpoint. We serve Bonner, Boundary, and some of our services go into Cootney County. So the services that we provide through our nonprofit arm are vast. And then we have a whole other medical side of our work where we're doing the span neuters for feral cats. Also, the low-cost span neuter that's in our building. So a lot, we're rather large with the scope.
One last question, hypothetical, and I don't like hypotheticals, but let's say as we review the budget in the next council meeting, and the council said, no, we can't support this huge increase. What would happen at that point? Even if the council said, we really do want to use you, we just can't find that incremental increase in the budget. What, what would that mean?
Yeah, so I have, I think, been pretty transparent since March that we are more than happy to sit down and have a conversation and see where those, you know, where those lie. But I will be honest with you that when we were negotiating in previous years, not necessarily with Sandpoint, just to be fully transparent. There seems to be this idea that because we care so much that we'll give in and just fold and say, oh, yes, we're going to take care of it. So this year, it's literally at a point for us that we cannot continue to pride the service, like the, our costs and what has happened to us. Just because of the cost, like my insurance went up 100% with no claims. My garbage bill is 50,000 a year. Like, the expenses that we incur are rather large. So we can't continue to say, ah, you know, we're not going to do this. So we strongly, we want to strongly say that this is the amount of money, which is why we've given you a plan. And then if there still needs to be wiggle room, I'm more than happy to meet with you.
Thank you.
Mandy, I have one last question. I recollect there was a animal owner who had a bunch of animals, and the state came in and took them away. Did you, I think there were sled dogs, maybe, did you take those animals? Do you remember the incident I'm referencing?
So the state didn't take them away. There were 20, around 20 huskies that were abandoned throughout Bonner County. All of those animals came in to us that were found. And then we provided medical care and treatment. If medical care and treatment was not provided to those dogs, they likely would have died. It was a, their issues were rather vast. And then we went to court. We did medical evaluations. And then we went to court, um, we did medical evaluations on all of the dogs. Uh, this was under Bonner County, it was requested of us. Um, they called and let us know that they had no budget money to do those veterinary evaluations. And if they didn't have them, they wouldn't be able to prosecute. So we did that um, through donor support. And then we went to court, we received restitution and then the restitution was overturned.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And well, um, if there's no further questions from council, Mandy, thanks for your time today and uh, you know, we'll discuss this uh, during the budget process and hopefully we can find something that works for you and uh, like you, our insurance uh, increases and uh, we, we have very few dollars to, you know, apply to, to projects. But maybe even the one percent tax could support something like this. So um, I pledge to keep working with the council to find a, a good solution for you. So
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Just wanna say, I think, um, Councilor Dick, that in the packet, I think it was spread out, the payment, I can't find it right now, but I did see it somewhere.
Yes.
If you want to look at it again, it's somewhere.
And we'll have an opportunity to look at that and go through it when we get into the budget um, process. So with that, I'd invite uh, staff to come up for some quick reports. I guess um, Chief Kuhn, um, I know you're here and you are the person who has to address these animal issues. So just for, just relevancy, why don't you go first? And thank you for coming in on your day off. Uh, I hope you're having a good vacation. You just couldn't stay away.
I've had a fantastic vacation. We put thirty five hundred miles on the motorcycle, got to see about six different states. And uh, it was, it was beautiful, but uh, it was important to come back today just so that we can make sure that we're all on the same page um, with, with Mandy and the organization. Uh, we have, I think Manny and I have worked for thirteen, fourteen years. I think uh, since I took over chief, we have, we do have a good working relationship. I do agree that the, there needs to be an increase in the budget. I, I've been pretty clear with them. I don't agree sixty five thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars is uh, is something that should be tasked back on us as rest citizens to take care of that six hundred and, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and some change per dog for a five day hold. That's a, that's a huge number to put back on our taxpayers. And I see that one of the questions from one of the council members, uh, asked, what are the other cities doing? So the city of Cooney County, so the county of Cooney County, Coeur d'Alene, Rathrum, Hayden City. And I think it's Hayden Lake City, uh, or Hayden Lake. They do contract with their animal shelter down there in the, in the Cooney County area. Uh, the system they have is, is fairly simplistic in that aspect. If a dog's found, they take it to the shelter, they, they do the medical stuff, the same way that Mandy's explained, they get their vaccinations, they get it checked out. Um, when that owner of that dog comes in to collect that dog, there's a fee assessed back to that homeowner for that hold. It's anywhere from fifty dollars plus twenty dollars a day. Those citizens pay that fee to get their dog back. One of the things we don't do is we don't collect those fees here in Bonner County. Uh, Mandy's been pretty um, adamant that they don't want to collect those fees. Matter of fact, they don't even want to let us know who's getting the dogs, so we can go after them for fees. So there's some, there's some strife and some struggles in there as we try to map out a potential future going forward. In Cooney County, if the dog's not claimed, it does fall back on law enforcement to make that, that payment. It's an eighty-five dollar flat rate per dog. So all those cities and counties that contract, it's eighty-five dollars a dog. Not six hundred and sixty-four dollars a dog, based off of the ninety-nine dogs we did last year. A huge difference in, in the dollar amount. Um, Post Falls, they have a little different approach. Um, not that I like it, but it is their approach. They have their, they've basically started their own animal control unit. They house their own dogs. When the dog's found, they bring them in, they do the five day hold, they do the evaluation on them. They work really hard to reunite those dogs with the, the owners. After five days or based off those statutes, it becomes property and those dogs are euthanized if they're not claimed. Uh, Priest River has a similar policy. They run their own shelter. And they follow a similar program as that after those timeframe, talking to the chief in Priest River, he said it's very rare that they can't find an owner of the dog. Um, but it does happen every now and then. What, what could happen is if we can't come up with an agreement with the, with the BTA and we have to take it over, we're probably gonna look at something like Post Falls or Priest River in that aspect to make it cost effective for our citizens. Um, we did increase our budget this year. We were paying a, an extremely low amount and Mandy's absolutely right. Twenty-four or twenty-five hundred dollars, I think, and it's been that way probably for the thirteen years I've been the chief, give or take. We used to do it. We used to get billed per dog and so initially we'd get billed per dog. Um, like Manny talked about, some of their accounting was a little bit of a struggle. We weren't getting billed on time. So we started just kind of a flat rate for the year, which made it easier, I think, for everybody. But so there's, there's some of that, but we did increase it to seven thousand dollars in my budget this year. When you look at that concept of like Cooney County having to pay eighty-five dollars a dog, that seems to be kind of a standard for the Northwest of what they're paying per dog when they're getting sheltered. You take the eighty-five dollars, the ninety-nine dogs that she has claimed, I got their paperwork from them. I went line by line for those ninety-nine dogs. Fifty-five of those dogs is what we took to the shelter, uh, residents took in the other chunk. Some of the, you have some residents that are, that have a great hearts and they're collecting four and five dogs a month and taking to the shelter. When you look at some of the addresses where they're claimed on their spreadsheet, some of them aren't even in the city. Uh, there's probably eight or nine that I saw that were not Sandpoint related. They were listed as a, a county or a Cootney. So there's just some accounting errors. Overall, we do need to increase our budget. I think what's really fair is that that eighty-five dollar flat rate, the, the seven thousand dollars that we could talk about later on in that contract, if you read her contract, she talked about they have the right to waive fees at their discretion, which is, which is absolutely okay if they want to waive their fees. But the problem is when we start waiving fees and I don't have the ability to go back and find somebody for an impound, who picks up that? It's like somebody else paying your speeding ticket. It's just not fair as a whole. So we really gotta sit down. We did meet with Mandy, I didn't, Captain Bailey, um, and Angela, Mandy or her team in the last couple of months. She's there, the, the group is pretty set on the sixty-five, seven thirty-three. I'm not, uh, set on, I think there's gotta be a, a lot a little more common sense approach, but so I'll stop. I, I could go on and I know Mandy could go on and we could argue both sides. I don't think today's the day to do it. Um, as we get into budgeting, I think that's where we could do more of it. But if you do have questions from anything that I brought up, I would, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Um, any questions from uh, count, uh, council and then any other updates once we get through this?
I had a, a question on the difference in services
Okay.
between that eighty-five dollars and what they provide.
So the, Cooney County, basically they get the same provision, those dot, and we're talking, and that doesn't go into like the bite holds or like some of the other holds, which could be negotiated because those are a different thing, just strictly uh, a stray dog or a dog that's picked up, that's taken to the shelter. That's a, if they are not claimed in those, in that county, it's an eighty-five dollar bill back to the police department. If they're claimed by the resident, they attach their fee for them and there is no bill that comes back to the police department. So of, of the ninety-nine dogs, we'll just use that number, of the ninety-nine dogs that uh, was turned into the shelter from the city, how many of those actually got returned back to a homeowner? Would be an important number to have so that we could assess what those fees could be. How many fees do they collect when they turn those back over? Wouldn't it be an important fee to have so we could really have an analysis of what, what truly could this fee be? Uh, we've actually, you're gonna see in our, in our budgeting, we actually increased and added an impound fee. So if I have to shelter a dog, there's an impound fee that we want to go back and the shelter doesn't want to collect it from somebody that I will, then we can help offset that, but we have to have that information from the shelter to go back and bill the homeowners for some of those fees to make sure that ever, that they're paying their fees. I'm not sure. So it's similar things. So they do the, the vet checks, the, the shots. Those are all pretty much, I would say, probably standard when any dog comes in, whether it's in Cooney County or Bonner County or any other county.
What if you come in contact with somebody who just cannot pay that bill?
For me, so when we charge them, they go to collections. Mandy, I think if they have that, and that, and that's where her big heart comes into play, is she looks at them and she'll waive their fee for doing that. But if she's waiving the fees, that shouldn't impact me because my budget's bigger.
It's the dogs.
Yeah, a, and there's, there's a heart, there's a, there's a tug on the heart there.
Yeah.
Um, that absolutely is part of it. And that's why I do think we need to increase it, but it's gotta be reasonable. And looking at that seven thousand dollars for us, based off an eighty-five dollar flat rate per dog, I think is reasonable in the aspect, that's what everybody else is doing.
Any other questions for the chief?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to think through the financial aspect here. So you said eighty-five dollars kind of going rate. Do you know whether that is typically also subsidized by donations like uh, BTA is, or is that like kind of revenue neutral actual cost to provide all of those services?
Oh, I would, I would only speculate. I would, I, that would be something that we, I never asked the shelters when we call them. That's something that we could definitely call back to the Cooney County shelters and some of the other ones and ask them. I would assume they're taking a loss in some of that and there's some offsets that are happening. Um, but knowing that they're collecting those fees, because you look at for like Cooney County, for example, that's a, if you pay for your dog being lost, it could be up to a hundred, well, it's fifty dollars for the impound fee plus eighty dollars, which is up to the four days. So they're a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty dollars was what they're charging you if you collect your dog. They're only charging the police off the, the city eighty-five. So right there, there's a change. So they are giving a discount um, to the cities for those.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of what the, the real costs of providing those services are. Do you, you mentioned um, Post Falls and Priest River have the euthanasia program. Do you know what the cost is per dog to, to hold them for five days and then euthanize them? Cause I assume that you can't just have like a high school kid paid ten bucks an hour to do that.
No, so like Post, Post Falls, what they do is they charge, if you come and get your dog, it's thirty-five dollars for the impound fee, twenty-five dollars a day up to the five or five days is what they're charging if you collect your dog. If you don't, after the five days, they advertise, they try to placement. All the same things that Manny talked about doing, they try to do. And if they can't, then they, they euthanize them. That fee is usually based off the weight of the dog. Um, talking to the one agency, they said they've never spent over a hundred dollars to have that done at one time.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking the cost of the whole program, you know, and I'm thinking, if we were to try and build our own kennels and then hire someone to prester, and then pay a veterinarian to come out and euthanize dogs, I feel like we'd hit sixty-five thousand pretty quickly.
Um, probably not. And I say that based off Priest River doesn't have a huge budget. Um, the way they have it set up, they have their kennels right next to the, the PD or in the PD. I didn't quite understand it. The staff that's working takes care of the dogs. So you look at like, yes, let's say that for worst case scenarios, we had to use our crows, we have three crows uh, plus our officers. If we have to shelter them, we have a facility, we could put them in it. We could water them, we could maintain them, we could walk them, we could do all those things. Um, getting some of the, the, the vet checks ahead of time and that would be another struggle. I don't know. So some of those operational costs from employees, we already have, like Priest River and Post Falls, they run three employees, I think that do it all. One supervisor and then two animal control officers that manage that program. So there's only three and they're out doing their other duties at the same time. I, it'd be something we could look at as we get closer to budget. What is a hard cost for something like that, which I, I don't have.
And Chief, I imagine we could collaborate with the county in Ponderay as well, maybe on a shared service. I mean, I'd want to talk to Mandy about, I don't want to negatively impact them, but
Yeah. Like, and I know talking with the Sheriff's Department of Ponderay, they're not gonna, they are struggling with the same numbers that we've been, we presented with.
I have a question for legal and sorry to catch you off guard. Um, is there anything in state code and maybe you need to research it, but when there's a state code requiring we take care of something like stray animals? If we simply don't uh, budget for that, does the state step in? Uh, whose responsibility do the, those sort of enforcement or statute uh, provisions fall upon? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. So there would be an allegation of a dereliction of your responsibility that's required under state code and likely an investigation by the attorney general's office.
Okay.
He can look at it for a more comprehensive answer. That's just a general.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the big question there is too, is the county is responsible for it and have oversight? And I think the language talks about what, if the cities have adopted a a plan or have adopted rules or guidelines. So that would be something they'd have to clarify.
Okay. Um, any other council um, questions on this subject before uh, the chief gives us any other updates that are happening? It's a busy weekend for him, I know.
On a happier note, Fourth of July is here. It is tomorrow. We do have our parade set. Uh, it kind of is a reminder for, for us. Uh, anybody that may be listening, um, we do have the parade, the kitty parade starts in the morning, the main parade starts at ten. It's the same route that's happening. One of the biggest confusion that takes place is usually in the evening time for the fireworks. We do shut down the beach. Um, we start limiting traffic that comes in and out of there, six thirty, seven, depending on how full it is going to be. It looks like it's gonna be a nice day. Uh, knock on wood, hopefully it stays that way and it's not Sandpoint and the weather changes. Expect a bunch of traffic problems on First Avenue, expect the beach to be full, expect law enforcement to be out. We do shut down the beach, we do block it off. Um, it's better to walk in or bike in than it is to, to try to drive in and then get out. Uh, we let all of our pedestrians out first. If you've never been down there and then the vehicles come out, there's usually some, some grumblings about why. It's just safer to get our pedestrians and our bicyclists out first. Um, vehicles, they can wait. And so we expect a, a wonderful Fourth. I do appreciate that Councilman Dick and his comments with those who put on the, the parade and the fireworks, they put a lot of effort year round to get that done. And they do announce the Lions Club does an outstanding job. So uh, kudos, a true kudos to them. So that's really kind of the big update. We have some staffing changes that are taking place. Uh, Jackie retired, as you guys heard two weeks ago, her last day was on the first. We'll be looking to fill and, and change some positions. So we're excited for, for some of those things. That's really, unless you guys got any questions other than those.
Uh, are you allowed to throw candy out of floats? That's the big question.
That's a fantastic question. We get that for Lost in the Fifties, we get that for Fourth of July. My recommendation is no.
Okay.
Anytime you throw candy out on the roadway, but however, it's not the city that sets those rules and those guidelines. It's really the organization. So Fourth of July, um, I think their rules say they're not supposed to throw candy from their parade. Um, it's the Lions Club who sets those rules and it's the Lion Clubs who enforces it. It's the same with the, the Lost in the Fifties. Um, having, even watching this last Lost in the Fifties, when people throw candy out, it doesn't quite get out of the roadway. Uh, the, the anxious kid runs out in front of the car. We had some near misses. Um, this last time, it always just makes my heart jump just a little bit. So I, uh, I don't encourage it, but it's really up to the organizations whether or not.
Thank you for clarifying that it's not a
It's not on the city to make that. It's not our ordinance. It's uh, it's up, it's up to their liability.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing and not to put you on the spot, but at least think about it here. The Sandpoint Shopping District uh, is having their meeting next Thursday over at Tango at eight AM. Uh, if there's any ability that we could get one of the community resource officers, uh, we got a number of business owners that have some questions. Uh, especially regarding parking and skateboarding and bicycles on sidewalks and all that good stuff.
Still meeting in the Series Three Bridge?
Uh, Tango Cafe.
Tango Cafe.
Ten o'clock Thursday.
Ten o'clock.
Eight o'clock, eight o'clock on uh, July ninth.
July ninth. I will calendar, I'll be there and I will see, July ninth is what you said, right?
Yep.
July ninth. I will calendar it and I'll make sure myself and I'll see if I can drag.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Makes Chief uh, enjoy a return to vacation. Uh, any other staff reports? Councilman Welker or Cheryl or Cheryl Hughes, Central Services Director?
I have a brief update from the Central Services Department. Um, we will start with the special events, obviously. Shin Dix tomorrow for Fourth of July, which we've already spoke about. But we also have the um, the First Avenue and Idaho Street Fourth of July barbecue. That hasn't been mentioned. That is also going to be um, tomorrow. But it's, it starts, let's see, it doesn't even give a time. So it just says that they're gonna be closed in front of Idaho Street and um, it's gonna be in front of a house at First Street and Second Avenue for Neighborhood Barbecue. So that's been permitted. Um, there's gonna be the Antiquin Classic Boat Show. That's on July twelfth through the fourteenth. And that's gonna be down at the Sand Creek Boardwalk and Marina. They typically have about forty to fifty boats on display for that. And there's gonna be an event for kids where they can build their own boats and take it with them. So that should be a good time. And that kind of rounds out the next couple of weeks of special events that are taking place. Um, internally, we have a couple of employees that are moving on. Um, Garrett, who has been the Grants, Contracts and Procurement Specialist. He is actually going over to the county prosecutor's office for um, what he calls the unicorn position that it's just in his wheelhouse, it's in law enforcement. And so it's a career opportunity that he just can't pass up. So we're gonna miss him terribly. He's been a value to the city since he's been here um, just over a year and a couple of months. A value to the city since he's been here um just over a year and a couple of months. Um, but we do wish him well. Um, Cassidy is also moving on. She is going to be teaching, so she's really looking forward to that and. Um, it's, you know, perfect in line for her career goals. And it's going to be at the new Valor High at the Summit Church. And she is going to be here till the end of July, but then um she'll also be moving on. And again. We will miss her. She's been a tremendous value to the organization. Um, in City Clerk's office. Just to give an update in regarding business licensing. Um, per the city's city code, three dash eleven dash three dash A. A standpoint general business license is valid from the date it's issued through December of that same year. So as long as the ownership, the nature and the location of the business remains unchanged. Due to an administrative procedural change that was directed several years ago. New licenses issued since that time. In the months of January through November have not fallen under the December thirty-first um expiration date. Beginning this month, July, following the recent implementation of the BSA cloud upgrade. And the need to align the annual expiration of general business licenses with the expiration of other licenses. That are business related registrations and permits. And in compliance with the city code that's already in place. The expiration date for all general business licenses will be transitioned back to December thirty-first. So the clerk's office is currently communicating with all businesses renewing their license. And the first trial run this week has been very successful. All renewals are going to be transitioned to the December thirty-first expiration date over the course of the next several months. And as of this month, all new licenses will expire December thirty-first.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just.
Provided by city code.
I'll just say, um, I worked with uh the clerk's office on that, and that's to. Put us on an annual cycle. So every month, we don't have an employee tracking fifty or a hundred business license that have expired. So it's going to be a. Once a year, you know, one week effort, you know, and those that don't um get their licenses will have a. Very simple process for notification and it won't be this continual drag for us. So.
Correct.
Thanks Cheryl and Melissa for that.
And um, that is.
Oh.
Good question on that. Is it prorated for say a new business that opens mid-year?
No, it is not.
Forward will not be known.
Okay, so you pay the same if you get it.
Twenty-five.
Yes.
December first as January first.
I think that was the goal of the previous administration maybe, but um it really creates a lot of administrative work to track those. All the way along. So we can look at prorating them.
Particularly for a new business, for a, a business that's renewing and has been operating for that full year, it makes sense that they should pay the full rate, but. Somebody who's applying for a business license for the first time.
Yeah.
In, on Thanksgiving, you know, seems a little unfair.
Definitely something to um evaluate and consider.
That's all. Did you ever come?
Yes, I had a question. Um, how many businesses are in standpoint on? The books?
On the books.
Roughly. Melissa, any idea?
Roughly, um, it's approximately thirteen hundred, I believe, licenses.
Though that's not going to create. A workforce issue and getting all those really licensed at the same exact time.
Just hit send.
It's what we always used to do and what exactly what the mayor just said. It's more of a hit send now with our new software.
Okay, so there isn't a, an employee issue where that needs to go through people and needs to be managed. Okay. That was my only question and make sure that we don't choose to change something and look back and go. Oh gee, we can't do it that way because we don't have the manpower.
Yeah, and I think with the new BSA cloud upgrade that we're using, it will streamline it even more.
Yeah, and this.
I guess I'm old enough to remember shuffling paper and that would be a nightmare if you had to do all thirteen hundred at the beginning of the year.
I, I, I remember those days.
Thank you. That's.
Any other questions?
No, um, anything else for us?
Thank you very much.
Thanks Cheryl. Have a great holiday. Me planning. And Development Director Jason Walker. Hi Jason.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. Got a few updates for you from our CPD department today. I'm going to start with an update on the James E. Russell Indoor Sports Center. Um, we were contacted by Jim Russell himself on Friday last week, saying that he would be in town with his mother Ginny for the Fourth of July weekend. And that Ginny, who has not seen the building since the groundbreaking ceremony last year, uh, would love to get a tour. So. I want to extend a huge thanks to Maeve who rallied the troops, literally all of the uh leadership team at Gino Construction and ALSC are architects. Uh, the mayor, myself, Katie and Cheryl from City Staff, Heather from City Staff. And members of the tennis community were all um invited to a warm reception, as I would call it, on Monday morning. So we all met at the uh building and it was a really good time to visit because it's starting to look more like. The finished product. The framing on the inside of the building is nearly complete. For the lobby and reception area and the community room. The asphalt has been poured, the sprinkler system is in, um HVAC is beginning to go in, wiring. We're going to see lights hung in the next few weeks. Drywall is going up next week. Um, we had a great time and I wanted to actually just share. Something with you here. I'm going to. Put this up. And just show this lovely picture of uh several of the youth. This is actually our state champion high school tennis team that came out to show their thanks to Ginny and Jim. They presented Ginny with a golden tennis racket that was signed by. All of the state championship tennis players, some of whom might go on to be professional tennis players someday. Um, we had our tennis coaches there. We had members of the STA Board of Directors. And it was just a really um welcoming event. Ginny had tears in her eyes when we took this picture. Uh, Gino Construction had a special pink hard hat for her for the occasion. So I just wanted to say thanks again to Jim and Ginny Russell. Ginny is the widow of James E. Russell. Um, lifelong Bonner County residents. They still come to. Their uh property out in Lakewood every summer, and there's about forty family members here this week for the family reunion. And also for a memorial service for James Russell's brother who passed away a few months ago. Um, Ross Russell. So we were really excited to, to welcome them to visit the building. Um, as I mentioned, we're moving along with construction. Uh, the interior is expected to be nearly completed by mid-August. That includes the surfacing of the courts and the stripe. Well, the striping might come a little bit later, but there's still um an acrylic layer that's going to be laid over the asphalt. All of the internal HVAC, all of the internal lighting, wiring, the community room, the lobby area, the restrooms. There's actually five restrooms in this building. We expect most of that work to be done by mid-August. That seems really soon. Uh, but there's still a lot of work to do on the outside. So the outside includes. Uh, finishing work on the exterior, including the forty-foot canopy that extends out over pedestrian um plaza in front of the building. Um, all of the woodwork that's going on the front. We've had over seven thousand dollars of lumber donated by Idaho Forest Group to do all of the wood finishing on the front of the building. If you've seen the ICCU Arena at University of Idaho, it's the exact same concept that they have on the exterior of their building that we're doing on the exterior of the James E. Russell Building. The landscaping around sixty trees are going to be planted around the perimeter. Uh, some of that will be going on with the um implementation of the playground, which I'll be talking to you about a little bit later tonight as well. Um, meanwhile, we are moving forward with our operations plan, taking the work and insights from community volunteers such as Stefan Nybank, who I see here tonight. Stefan's put in thousands of volunteer hours towards an operations. Plan, proposed operating budget for the facility. It is budget season by the end of next week. Um, we will have drafted some preliminary. Fee schedules for membership options. And just to remind you, there's going to be free play options as well, and all youth will have free memberships at the facility. So, but we do have to have a funding up um plan to operate the facility, which we estimate will cost around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year to operate. But the, the gift to the community means there's no repayment of any construction cost for this building. So it's going to be considerably. Uh, cheaper than any other private facilities that, that might have been available in the community. Um, we're also talking to other user groups. This is called the Indoor Sports Center, not the Indoor Pickleball Center, despite what some of the members of the community have. Have called it. Um. Maeve and I have been talking to field user groups about potential applications of indoor turf in this, in, in this facility for seasonal use, perhaps on one of the courts. Uh, so that our local sports teams can practice in the colder months before the high school tennis season starts in mid-February. Um, there are lots of products available to make this a truly. Um, multi-use indoor sports center, which was the vision of Jim Russell with this donation. James E. Russell also played. Uh, for the Sandpoint High School football team as well. So we envision um within the first year having. Options for seasonal use of at least one of the four courts for uh multiple different field sports as well. And we are starting conversations with organizations in the community to, to help support that effort. Um, yeah, so. The building is coming along. I have a quick update on the skate park. Um, if you've been by Travers Park, there have been cement trucks going in and out for the last couple of weeks. They're actually coming surprisingly close to being done. They'd originally said mid-August. Their expected date of completion is now July twenty-second. It's quite refreshing to have a project well ahead of schedule. Um, and we are planning a volunteer day with the um Cedar Hills Community, the church in Ponderay. On July twenty-eighth to do some volunteer work around the perimeter of the skate park. We have some plants that we've ordered that we're going to be planting that day to kind of clean up and um. Make that site around the skate park look really great for a grand opening later in the month. So we do expect to have, it's not formal yet. We haven't uh published sized it, but we do expect to have a ribbon cutting on July twenty-eighth. So we encourage you all to join us. It's a Saturday.
And Jason, did you mention there's like three hundred volunteers coming out for that?
Cedar Hills Community Volunteer Day is three hundred and fifty volunteers around, around Sandpoint in Bonner County. So we've got about two dozen of them for Travers Park, and we're going to be doing a lot of like landscaping and um. Uh, projects on the Bicycle Skills Park and on the Skate Park. So Au-Austin, our um Parks Maintenance Supervisor has, has been coordinating with the Cedar Hills Volunteers for that effort. So you guys are all welcome to join. I'm taking my morning Saturday to come out and. Um, pull out a rake and a shovel and plant some plants myself. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I won't be attempting any tricks on a skateboard though. Um, the, the mayor mentioned the comp plan. Um, as of yesterday morning, the, finally got the final draft back from Logan Simpson. Our partners on that. It is at, it is available right now at sandpointidaho.gov slash comp plan. You can view the whole um high resolution document along with all the appendixes and for, for public um. Uh transparency, we also, we also published the list of edits that have been made since the last final draft that came last uh December. So all the, about nine pages of edits that. We worked on in several uh comp plan workshops um is also published there. So. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors, go check out the comp plan. Two weeks from tonight, we're going to bring that for final adoption, hopefully. And there will be a public hearing, of course.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, go ahead. Yeah. A quick question on that. In the past, we've used that online system for people to make comments. Is that going to happen again or is it just?
I don't know. No, that, that was open from, I think, October to December of last year. And that's what I think inspired a lot of the edits that subsequently made.
Absolutely.
With um, with going on to year five of comp plan work, we're hoping that. You know, the public has a chance to give it one last look over. And as the mayor said earlier, the goal for this public hearing is to. Not necessarily reopen the, the whole engagement process, but to wrap up the whole engagement process with, with a public hearing, as is required by law.
Excellent. I just wanted to clarify that if you have something to say. The hearing is the time to do it.
Yep, of course, people can um send emails to the clerk and enter those comments into the record as well.
Okay.
Between now and then.
Excellent. Thanks.
Yep. Um, we have a new staff member as of Monday. Our assistant planner Radica uh Bippin has joined the team. Radica comes to us from uh the University of Cincinnati, where she recently accomplished, achieved a master's in planning. She also has an undergraduate degree in architecture. She has an insanely impressive portfolio of work. Um, she worked in the Parks Department for the City of Cincinnati, doing all sorts of uh parks planning projects as an intern for the last two years. And she has just dove right in in the last few days. So I want to thank the whole planning team, our building inspectors, or sorry, our um, our building official, Brandon, our engineer. Um, Kelly, our admin assistant, and Darren, our interim planner for helping onboard her the last few days. Um, Radica will be joined by Bill Dean on the fifteenth. That's in just twelve days. He's our new city planner. He comes with twenty years of city planning experience. So he's going to be a great addition to the team. And that week, um. Darren is going to be in town to help onboard both Radica and Bill for the week. We also have a public hearing and planning zoning that week with two new subdivisions coming forward. So a lot going on in the planning world. We've also just had an, an offer accepted from. Um, Darren Wilson, he's going to be our new building inspector and he starts on August twenty-second. That's huge because Pete Scone, our uh building official, has basically been doing both those jobs for the last month. So Pete will be able to focus on his building official roles.
Um, I think with that, your department will be fully staffed.
Fully staffed CPD department. That's right. No more openings. Well, we've got the James E. Russell Building Supervisor position that we're hoping to post very soon. As we bring the building online, we're going to be adding around four new staff people to the rec uh division within my department. We need a minimum of four to open that building in November, including a supervisor and three part-time receptionist type um roles. So we're going to be staffing that out in the next few months as well. Finally, I have a ACHP Arts Culture Historic Preservation update for you. That takes me to my next slide up here. Um. This is going out on the city's uh social media, I think tomorrow, if I can bring it up. This is a cool project that Heather Upton has been um coordinating with the Bonner County Historical Society. This is a call for um stories about historic homes in Sandpoint. This is part of the um effort. To develop a new walking tour brochure, which functions as a landmark program for commercial and residential properties. This, this um program will also enrich the museum's archives to help them with research requests. And uh Heather wanted you all to know that this is, this survey is for educational purposes only. So we, this is another um great collaboration with a local nonprofit on a historical preservation effort. So. We are looking for stories about homes that aren't in the current walking tour brochure, but. Might have uh great historical stories that we can include in the next walking tour brochure, which is being developed over the next year. So that's it from CPD. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any ghosts.
Any questions for uh Director Welker?
I do have uh more information about the playground for you later tonight.
I have a question, but it doesn't relate to anything you asked. You talked about.
By our way. This is what it's about. So you can interact with our department.
Have the dogs been?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, no, I, I do have an update that I shared with the uh leadership team this morning about that. Um, we, I, we had met with our partners. We had um established, and there was a lot of back and forth with the police department and the community resource officers to establish the. The application, uh, the process for applying and how to properly vet participants. And we agreed that um we would need a minimum of eight to launch this program. I had six as of leaving work yesterday. When I got to work this morning, there were two more applications on my desk. So I will admit in preparation for this meeting today, I did not have time to review those two applications, but I think we're up to eight now. The goal is to have between eight and twelve handlers participate in this program. So now that we've reached eight. Uh, my goal is to have a kickoff meeting by the end of next week at City Beach with our community resource officers with. Sorry, Austin from uh Parks Maintenance with the or, the volunteer organizers of that program and the eight handlers and their dogs. So we do plan to do a orientation meeting, uh, hopefully by the end of next week. And then we should have some dog, dog patrols, um scaring off geese. We didn't want to do it before the Fourth of July. It's just a crazy time. So.
I asked because I was down there this morning to watch the sunrise and the geese coming out of the water and they got as far as the sand. It just made me think somebody had been chasing them. Because two, they were kind of like lead and they stopped. And they looked and they looked and somebody with a dog came on a leash and they went right into the water. So I'm wondering, I was just wondering if it had started or they just.
And when, and when it does start, any um, any, any, any permitted handlers will have um high visibility vests on. They've already ordered the high vis vest for the dogs as well.
And then one other question. Do we have a scooper?
Um, we're gonna, well, um, that's one of the reasons Austin's involved. He's going to be putting the, the dog bag. Well, that's going to be, yeah, there's. It's going to be an interesting challenge with um signage, because we don't want to roll out signage that says, dog's allowed off leash. There's, dogs are not allowed off leash.
No, and I'm not talking about dogs. I'm talking about goose poop.
Oh, goose poop. Oh, I, that's a question.
Machine at the.
I think the city has a rake.
Have a very large, I believe.
That feature right now needs a good scooping, a good, I don't know if it's operation.
I can check with Austin about, about that.
It was pretty bad this morning.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check in with Austin.
Hard for them in the grass, but you read that article I sent you about the roller. I sent you both that article from Vancouver.
Yeah.
We, we do have a, I believe it was a twenty-five thousand dollar scooper. Yeah. That you pull behind.
Yeah.
It's more for the sand, but.
Well, I knew he had one for the sand. He, it needs to be out there. Just saying. At least this morning was bad. And that article said goose, a goose poops every twelve minutes.
That's crazy, three pounds.
It is crazy. That's why there's so much poop.
Thank you, uh Director Welker. Any other questions for Jason?
No, he's left the podium.
Excellent.
He's no longer standing for questions.
It's my privilege to announce the Sandpoint Fire Chief for the first time, maybe.
Sorry, I'm still trying to get over the goose poop. I love it. How you guys doing this evening? Uh, let's see, I'm just sharing my screen real quick. Doesn't work. Yeah. Ah, see, I knew I was gonna mess it up. Got away. Oh, I just have to go to here, right? Got away. Oh, I just have to go to here, right?
Sure.
There we go. I knew I was forgetting a step. Thank you, man. There we go. All right. So, great to be here this evening. The City of Sanford Fire Department was successfully reestablished. As a department on July the first, twenty twenty-four. So on Monday, we went full blown as Sandpoint Fire Department. Crews are very excited to, so today's day three. So we're, we're moving. Crew's very excited to get this new chapter moving in the right direction, seeking out opportunities to to better the department, better each other and better themselves. As you can see, our, our rebranding has been accomplished to a point to include some of the uniform items and decals on our apparatus. There was a little bit of time we're riding around with no, no decals on. People thought we went out and bought all these new trucks. I'm like, no, no, they're, we just have to change it. So very happy with the work that that was done there. We expect the remaining uniform items to be accomplished during this next budget cycle. And I'd like to just thank the crews for the design of the emblem and to just appreciating them seeing that project through to completion. We do have some more exciting times coming our way as far as ahead of us to build our apartment with some of the new strategic priorities and goals. Sitting down with the crews going over some of those. We'll be engaging with other fire agencies to finalize the automatic aid response protocols. We have a pretty solid base on what we'd like to propose and we have a meeting next Thursday that should see our biggest movement to date on that project. Our intention is to have it ready for implementation this fall. That is, if there's so many moving parts, departments and dispatch center, everybody's in their real busy time. So we're just coordinating that out and that looks like it's going to be the best time to get the dispatchers on board and get all the response cards changed. On a relatable note to that, that auto aid yesterday morning, we had a call come in for a fire at the interstate plant over on Baldi. And I'd like to thank our crew and our partner agencies for their seamless response to that, response to that incident. In addition to the Sandpoint Fire Department, companies from Silkirk and Northside districts. As well as Sandpoint Police Department and Bonner County EMS reported to the scene and each agency played a role in that successful outcome. The Sandpoint Fire Department took delivery this afternoon of our new electric jaws of life rescue tools. We'll be working throughout the weekend to get them brought online and placed into service. Lastly, just a quick reminder, because it is summertime and we do have the Fourth of July tomorrow. Although, although the heat isn't here yet, there is a significant increase in temperatures forecasted for next week. Please, I'd like to ask everybody not to walk their dogs in the hottest part of the day and to leave or to leave them in a vehicle. Check, check up on, on our elderly population, population, be it a family member or a neighbor, he can adversely affect them more rapidly. The Fourth of July is truly an awesome holiday. I was just wanted to remind everyone to find, try to find a way to. To keep safe during that, during that time and make that a priority. So with that, I'd just like to take a second and do a quick refresh from our city code and the state statute. Our city code under Title Four and the Public Health and Safety Chapter Three, Fire Prevention and Protection. And three B is for fireworks prohibited acts. It is unlawful, unlawful for any person to possess, sell, give away or discharge any firecrackers or fireworks of any kind in the city. Except those fireworks specifically approved by the provisions of the Idaho Code. And those are the non-aerial common fireworks. That means any fireworks such as ground spinners, fountains, sparklers. Smoke devices and the those snakes designed to remain on or near the ground and not travel outside of fifteen foot. Fifteen foot diameter circle or emit sparks or other burning material which land outside a twenty foot diameter circle. Or above a height of twenty feet. Non-aerial common fireworks do not include firecrackers, jumping jacks or similar products. That's pretty much us. We just want to make sure that everybody's having a good time. It's a big event for us here in the city. I echo Councilman Dick with the Lions Club. They do a fantastic job. The police department does a fantastic job with all the people coming in. I've been to concerts that can't empty out that fast. They've really got it down to a science. So I appreciate all the work that they do as well. We just wanted to make it safe for everybody and that way they enjoy coming back. So looks like it's going to be a good one.
Thanks, Chief. So despite the, you haven't landed the ship on the auto, auto aid. And we do have in place, based on the response yesterday, there's some kind of system where our partners do show up and help us. And presumably we do the same.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're still under a mutual aid agreement. So we have not changed any of the response protocols at all yet. The, the companies from Silkirk Fire will still respond with us in an automatic style. Northside is the one that we're bringing into that loop. But yeah, we didn't, didn't miss a beat yesterday. And I was sitting there writing that out and we had another call today. And same thing, didn't miss, didn't miss a beat. Everybody did what they were supposed to do, showed up on time and took care of business. So.
Excellent. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate all the hard work and getting, I know it's been a lot of work getting this over the the hump and reformulating the department. And congratulations as being the new Sandpoint Fire Department Chief and. Look forward to the success you're gonna have with your group.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Be safe out there.
Yep.
I think that does it for department head. Sarah, anything? You're pretty good. Excellent. And I'll just mention, do check the weather starting Tuesday. It looks like for this foreseeable future, we're in the. Starting the eighties and going to the nineties to upper nineties, over a hundred in Spokane. So it's that time of year and hopefully. We get through it without dry lightning and erratic fires. So. Next is the public forum, which allows the public to address council and myself on items listed on the consent calendar on any relevant city of Sandpoint related topic. Not included on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak now or during any other portion of the meeting when public comment is allowed, you must complete the comment signup form located at the table by the door. And hand it to the chief or one of the other staff members in the back of the room. To accommodate those who wish to speak during general public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda. A total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have the opportunity to do so in that timeframe, we will reopen the public forum at the end of the meeting. Like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted here in chambers at the entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful. Not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be boisterous or disruptive, no calling out, clapping or holding signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning related matter outside of an official public hearing. Public comment time is for comment only. No questions or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. When you step it up to the podium, please state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint City Limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Christine Moon.
Hello, Ms. Moon.
Hi, I'm Christine Moon. I'm a city resident. Mr. Mayor and councilors, I'm here to push replay on myself and comment again on. Creating lifeguard, a lifeguard program at the city beach. I know that you are in the period of budgeting. And we are in our second season of having no lifeguard program at the city beach. And we really. Should have one. We're not discouraging people from swimming there in any shape or form. And so I think it's really important to have people there who are. There for the public safety.
Thank you, Ms. Moon.
Janine Shepherd.
Good evening, Janine.
Hi, Janine Shepherd, Bonner County. Just here to pray for you, Mayor, council members. I'd love it if you'd join me. Lord, as we get ready to celebrate our nation's Independence Day, we want to begin by thanking you for your blessings on our nation. Our nation was built by men and women who loved you and loved our nation. We are grateful for the many ways you have had your hand upon us. We thank you corporately for the blessings you bring, but also individually, as we look at our own lives, you are a good father. We ask that you bless the mayor and the council members as they meet this evening. Give them ears to hear from you, Father, that you would make your will evident. And your plan clear for each agenda item. Help each one make decisions based on you and what is best for our city. You have ordained this place with these people in this time, and we trust your sovereign hand in all things. We invite your spirit here to move as you see fit. We have seen your faithfulness in the past and we praise you for your faithfulness that you will show going forward. God bless America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Jesse Warburton.
Hello, Jesse.
Hi, guys. I'm Jesse Warburton. I live in Ponderay. And I'm just here to address the same issue that I spoke to you a couple of months ago. I haven't been contacted by anybody that says that they're putting together a committee or anything. I'd be glad to meet with them if they want to glean from me my ideas on what a busking community would be. Maybe everyone thinks that it would be real expensive on the city. Or maybe even it costs a lot of people's energy. I don't think so. I mean, it could be elaborate, of course, but I think a start would be to have. Two or three areas in the already existing parks. Where there's a wood stage possibly covered with a weather and then nearby. A electrical input that the buskers could use. Now, as far as the buskers. A busking is street musician. I think everybody knows that, right? Oh, you don't know? That's just a name for a street musician. I'm a busker in this community because. Several years ago, the council agreed to change the ordinance that allowed busking in Sandpoint. I was harassed before that happened. So I appreciate the council and the mayor at that time. I don't know what it would take to get anyone excited about this. I'll just say that I came from the farmer's market before I came here. And there were two fellows that were just visiting in town for a week, visiting his, his family out in Hope. They were really good. They were bluegrass, mandolin and guitar and the guitar player played some harmonica and they sang harmony. They, they got the farmer's market gig at a last minute. Good for them. But if not. They could have passed into here, been here for a week and nobody heard them. I sat there and I was the only person that was paying much attention. But that's the kind of scenario that we could have on an ongoing basis, especially if people from Port Alain. Spokane, Bonners Ferry, Montana, Libby, wherever, whoever, if they were coming through the area. Or coming here just to expose their talents. It would be something for Sandpoint to host them and enrich our community. Ability to listen to more people than just Jesse Brother Music. So that's my spiel today. I hope that somebody will put together a committee and. I'd be available to meet with them if they want my input on what could be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Music.
Mr. Mayor, that is all for public forum.
That will conclude the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, total amount of bills is one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Reflecting two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and four cents for regable, regular payables. And eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-three cents per payroll. Councils or council, are there any questions or are there any items you wish to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Howard.
I have several questions on item five, so I would request that we move that to new business.
Item five, proposed resolution professional service agreement with Tishler Vice for development impact fee studies. Move to the end of old business. Anything else, council members? This will be a roll call. Oh, entertain motion to approve the consent counter as amended. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Schreiber. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor motion passes.
Great. We are done with old unfinished business, new business. With no old business on the agenda, we'll move on to the new business and a proposed changed order to the city's agreement with Gino Construction for the new inclusive playground and splash pad at Travis Park. I will now yield the award to Community Planning Development Director Jason Welker. Also just state, council member, you noticed this agenda is fairly light and so is last, last week, last meeting's agenda. Just eat your dinner for the seventeenth because we've got comp plan, we've got budget, we've got a bunch on the agenda. So you'll be earning your dollars on the seventeenth.
Okay. I think I've been kicked out of the Zoom meeting, so let me rejoin that. I'm kicked out, sorry. I think I probably accidentally left.
Will any council members be participating via water on the Fourth of July fireworks or are you all land people?
Working.
Working.
They have a front row view.
Yeah.
No ambivines. Land and water.
Air. Sound for good air. Not me, but someone could.
Yeah. Fly around.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening again, councilors. I believe I have the change order up here. We have. We have a change order on the agenda tonight as promised. When we entered into this contract, I think it was just two weeks ago. We explained that, given the challenges faced in the construction industry and the, some of the changes that were. Desired in this project over the last year, we would be going over the initial budget of one point one, three million dollars for the playground. The pro, the change order today is for one hundred and six thousand dollars and I will show you what it's for. And the, the, the background here, of course, is that. The lo, the lowest bid that we got for the project from Gino Construction. Already had us eighty-six thousand dollars over the original budget. That, that was. That was obviously not what was envisioned when the planning for this project started a year and a half ago. But we happened to have money in our Parks Capital Improvement Budget this year. That was originally allocated for projects that were not feasible in this year. So the mayor directed the Parks Team to allocate that roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Towards the Parks Projects that we did want to complete this year. So that's, that's why. Unlike projects that have ample contingency funds, small, relatively small change orders need to be approved by city council. Despite the fact that we, we have money allocated towards the completion of our three parks projects this year. We do need to get changers orders approved for you. So what is an additional alternative? I think you've probably heard this term now. When the bid package went out, we had the base bid, which was the, basically the bare minimum. To get the, the playground built. We, and then we had the additional alternatives, which are the things that we would like to implement if funds are available. The additional altern, alternatives totaled around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for this project. We, myself and Maeve slashed about half of that to get this one down to what we view as the, the. The bare minimum for what we would like to accomplish. And that is, I'm putting it up on the screen for you here. Is it gonna let me show that? Nope, it's only showing one screen.
You just need to scroll a bit maybe. Oh, no.
No, I'm sorry. I'm. I'm gonna stop sharing and share a different screen with you really quick. So there are three components to this change order. One of them is the pump system that was requested by the mayor to, this is a great idea actually. That should end up saving the money, the city money in the long run, which is to recycle the gray water from the splash pad into irrigation. For the surrounding landscaping. That is a seventy thousand dollars. So seventy thousand dollars of the hundred and six thousand of this change order is for that pump system. The other, and Pam, I saw your email towards the end of the day today. I apologize for not replying first thing, but. I, I sent you this picture because the other two items included in this change order are both visible here. This is a rendering of what is described in the change order as the north berm and the. Asphalt pathway and ADA landing at the top of. and the asphalt pathway and ADA landing at the top of the slide that you see here. So you can just see in gray here is the asphalt pathway that's coming around up to the top of a little four-foot hill with, this is an ADA accessible slide. So this is a roller slide that we've already ordered. This slide should be arriving in September along with the rest of the, the LS Equipment Landscape Structures. And the, the, the change order includes the work to build that berm. And then the other, the third item in the change order was for the rock retaining wall, the boulder retaining wall there. So that's what's described in this change order. The total is a hundred and six thousand dollars. We have around two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funds remaining in our Parks Capital Improvement Fund with the completion of the skate park just twenty days away. We don't expect any more change orders there. They're pouring concrete. The excavation work is where the first big change order was on the skate park. So we slashed most of what was in this change order to get down to what we thought were just kind of the absolute need to haves here. The pump system, that's going to pay for itself in a few years because we won't be sending all that water down into the sewer and then paying for water to irrigate our crops with the, or sorry, to irrigate our landscaping with. The splash pad will be irrigating the landscaping using one round of water instead of paying for water twice. So that's, that's the rationale behind that pump system that made up the bulk of this change order. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I wanted to show you this picture though, because this is items two and three in the change order today.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor.
One question. You pointed out the nice asphalt ramp to the top to make the slide accessible. In the picture, it doesn't show an exit. Is there going to be a surface where a wheelchair could then be rolled up and, and a way for the child to exit?
The little landing here is for adapting.
Transfer. That's a transfer platform, but I'm talking about them then rolling out away from the playground.
That's, yeah, no, I'm not sure. You mean like an asphalt path to the bottom of the slide as well?
Yeah, if it's truly accessible, you gotta have an entrance and an exit.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that Maeve is probably on top of all that, but a lot of times the pictures that are available are not.
This, this picture was not from our landscape architect. This was from Landscape Structures, which just manufactures the slide.
And that's.
Yeah. So they actually didn't know what the surrounding area would look like.
Okay. All right. If you can just.
I could clarify that for you and check with Maeve what the accessibility to, but that's a really good point. If you have wheelchair access to the top of slide, you need wheelchair access to the bottom of the slide.
Yeah, they should probably work on that picture at the company.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Jason, a couple of questions. So with the, if we approve this change order, what's the impact on the overall schedule for the completion of this?
Oh, nothing. No, this doesn't impact the overall schedule at all. This, this work was planned in the scope from Gino and the, the, the schedule is actually less dependent on the contractor's ability to mobilize and more dependent on when all of this equipment arrives. We don't know exactly when the equipment's going to arrive. We expect the playground to be ready for the equipment when it arrives this fall. So in conversations with Gino, we, we're hopeful that the whole playground project will be done when we open the TMZ Russell Building at the end of November. Obviously, the splash pad won't be switched on in November, but it's likely that the construction will be done at the playground and we'll be able to open the playground to the community at that time.
And do you foresee any other change orders beyond this one to complete the project?
No, I, full transparency, we, we would love to add more splash pad features. One of the items that we struck from the original change order that Gino provided was five additional splash pad features. Where the mayor and I talked today, we're looking at possibly like basically plumbing for future splash pad features, but that was going to be something like thirty-five thousand dollars that we just decided that was a nice to have, not a need to have. But that was to maintain that extra hundred thousand dollar, you know, contingency. That's not really a contingency. It's just extra money that the mayor's allocated towards this project. So we don't foresee any further change orders. I mean, these are the only additional alternatives that we are selecting from a menu of additional alternatives that we had originally asked for bid prices for. Yeah. So I mean, unless we, you know, let's say in September, we're like, oh, we actually had no unforeseen costs. We have an extra hundred thousand. We could possibly, you know, place those additional features in the splash pad at the last minute or next year or something.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And Councilman Howard, I would just reiterate that we all, if you don't know the history of this site, they did do some geotech investigation. When they go in to dig here, there is a chance they could hit sawdust or something else that wasn't discovered in the geotech. So we are hoping for the best and hopefully no more change orders.
And if I can comment on that, the only place we need to excavate fairly deep on this project is where the, the, the water tank goes for the splash pad. The Russell Building was excavated eight feet of grade. This is more like a foot or something. And the Gino crew that's been working here for the last year is, is pretty confident they're not going to come across anything like they did when they had to go really deep for the Russell Building. So we don't foresee, there's not, I mean, excavation is a relatively small part of this project compared to Gino. Sorry, compared to Russell.
I would add that a tank doesn't need the compaction and other things that a building needs, so. Any other questions from the council?
I would like just some clarification.
By what?
And I know I'll ask him a question, but I can discuss with you.
Sure.
Okay. I listened to the meeting, the last meeting and the whole discussion about the money. And at that point, if I heard correctly, you referred to this better way of using the water instead of recirculating, which I think is a great idea. Makes much better sense. But you said it had already been chosen. And so if it had already been chosen, why is it now, why is it now a seventy thousand dollar addition?
Because at the time, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, we didn't have, so Gino is the, the the contractor on this project, the GC, the general contractor. They have a team that goes out to bid for all of these components. We didn't know what that pump was going to cost at the time. So Gino, and in fact, it was just about a week or about a week ago, we had the kickoff meeting at the playground with Gino. And they're new, they have a new project manager who's actually the brother of the project manager for the Russell Building, who's going to be overseeing this. They brought to us the bid, the bids that they received, and that's how we got that number. So we just didn't know what that system was going to cost. The tank was already determined in the, in the prior plan. So we only knew about a week ago what the, I guess it was a little more than a week ago, early last week, I believe, that we, we sat down and saw that actual cost of the pump system.
The assumption was that it was already chosen. Those were the words that you shared with Kyle, Councilman Schreiber. So that's confusing to me. And I know you reallocate, we're reallocating funds. You also, I also heard that eighty, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars was the maximum amount can be for the playground and splash pad. I heard that. I listened to the last meeting. How is, how can that be said? And then now?
That was the bid, right? And that didn't include these alternatives. So by deprioritizing a consultant to design a dog park for twenty-five thousand, the kayaks and deprioritizing the resurfacing of that tennis court. We basically, I basically freed up some additional funding to make sure that this project could get completed as well as we could and as depicted originally. So these are alternatives when they bid it. They said, we'll do a base for this, and then these alternatives cost more because it wasn't budgeted for under this project. That's what the change orders are for. So the money's available. It wasn't originally earmarked or allocated to this project, but.
I remember Jason saying that he had more exciting projects. Why aren't for that money? Made me think that wouldn't be used anymore past the dog park and the kayak. And those are my misassumptions, I guess. That's why I went back and listened again to make sure I'm understanding where the extra money being requested, why it keeps coming up.
The, the simple answer is when we bid this project and budgeted for this project, there was no contingency. And it was all done very tight, so we don't have that flexibility. You know, in this case, when I said I chose, it was chosen, the, the recirculating pump, the irrigation pump, probably two months ago, as they were going through the actual bid documents, Maeve came and said, here's the plan for the water. It's going to get turned on. It's going to flow down to the sewer plant. We're going to take clean water that we treat and we're going to literally run it and flush it down. Then we're going to pay to irrigate. I said, that doesn't make sense. There's got to be a better option. What about a cistern? And so when I said chosen, my words were probably not as clear as they need to be.
Because I thought it was already included in that. Also, the roller slide, wasn't it ordered already?
Yeah. Yeah, that was part of our LS Order Landscape Structures Order several months ago. So the, the costs in this change order are not for the equipment. It's for the.
It's for the installation.
The, not, not even the installation. It's for all the earthwork and the landscaping and the asphalt work and the boulder work.
That's the installation of.
Yeah, not just the insulation, I should say. This is not just insulation.
And what I kept requesting from you and you and Maeve is, it says, see attached bid documents for more details. And that's what I had a hard time finding.
I think it's about a five hundred megabyte file.
Yeah, I know. And that's.
Open, yeah.
It took me forever looking through it to try to find these three things. And I still.
Yeah.
You gave me three pages, but they didn't really, anyway, that was frustrating. I'm just, just sharing. So I guess, yeah, the whole thing is, just the whole money thing is kind of frustrating to me, I guess. And can I ask you what your more exciting projects were going to be?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I think you'll, you'll hear about those in the budget.
Okay, because it was something you said.
I've been working on my budget narratives, which are going to go live next Friday.
You said you didn't want to use that two hundred and fifty thousand because you had more exciting plans for it.
You'll hear all about that next week.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions from the council? If not, uh.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I don't want to beat a dead horse on this, but I did go back and watch those last couple of meetings, both the January third and also June sixth. I think if I got those names right, numbers right. So just to clarify here, we went with a design that had an in-ground tank without including the pump in the design, in the bid.
That alternatively, it could have just run down the drain.
Yeah, if, we still have the alternative to send this water into the sewer.
So what happens with the tank?
The tank would hold the water and then we just put a pipe down to the sewer on mine strip.
What's the point of the tank if it's just going to run into the sewer? Why wouldn't it just run into the sewer?
So the original, you can see in the narrative here, the splash pad, actually, the, there were three options that the landscape architects provided us. There was pay for the water, run it to the sewer, let it go to the sewer treatment plant. And there was the original design, which is typical in some splash pads, is to have a recirculating system that requires chlorination and about three times a day, Parks teams have to go check for the chlorination. I don't know, because I'm not a engineer or landscape architect, what size tank is needed for the recirculating system? I don't, I don't know if this is the same tank that we're, we have now. That, it seems like a recirculating system, which was the original design, and a pump system would probably require about the same tank. You just need a small cistern for the water to flow into and then to pump it. I am pretending like I know what I'm talking about, but I don't. This would be, this would be a question for Mike Terrell, our landscape architect, who, who did all this architecture work. But I assume that the original design called, which called for not the send it to the sewer system, but the recirculating system using chlorination, that was determined to be, well, by the mayor, I think wisely, not to be the best option because of the cost of maintaining that system.
It's unhealthy to do that.
Well, it's, it's, there's an administrative cost. I mean, I go out, there's requirements from the state code to testing water that's available. It's like a swimming pool. You have to test it, make sure it's adequate.
Yeah, I went back and re-listened and you did say savings. And now in retrospect, it sounds like you're talking about recurring maintenance cost savings, not savings on initial project costs, clearly, because we have.
Right, yeah, not, not maintenance. We, we buy our water from ourselves.
Sure.
So that costs money to irrigate. And then it costs money to treat the water when it flows down the sewer line. So those savings, as an example, the Spray Park in Jeff Jones Square costs us about fifteen thousand dollars a year to run water down there, which is crazy in my mind. We're going to be putting a timer down there. I've asked Jason and Austin to put a timer where you push it. It runs for five or 10 minutes and it turns off. But that's a thought that it's environmentally friendly. It will save us over the years the cost for irrigating, paying for irrigation water and also paying for splash pad water that would run down and the administrative cost for testing a holding tank that would recirculate the water. So.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm all for the, the concept and I'm glad we're going this route. I'm just wondering why it wasn't included in the original bid when we knew we wanted it and we were.
It was, it was listed as, as an alternate because we were trying to do the cheapest bid possible to meet, you know, the budget.
Right.
So this was an alternate that was presented in the bid documents. Okay, what, what's it take to flush it down the, the drain? And then what does it take or to recirculate it? Or what does it take to, you know, re-irrigate with it?
Right. I, I recall a pretty robust conversation about, will there be more change orders? Because we obviously don't have a contingency and there was no discussion that, oh yeah, there will be a change order because we're going to need a seventy thousand dollar pump for this addition that we're adding on to this contract that we haven't even signed yet. We knew at that time that we were going to add this, right?
It was my hope, yeah.
Yeah. So why wasn't that discussed at all?
I, yeah. I think I did promise you there would be more change orders when we went, when we put this before you a few weeks ago because we knew that there were additional alternatives that were kind of essential. I mean, the, the slide, for example, the roller slide without this work. And I, I honestly kind of don't know why these weren't included in the base bid. That would be a, probably a question for Maeve, and I apologize that she's not here to answer that.
My recollection is we were trying to get the base bid as low as possible because we had a budget of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
And if these had been in the base bid, then our base bid would have come back at nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
And I guess that's, what's the difference really? If we knew that we were going to add them, why not?
The budgeted amount for the project that would have exceeded is my understanding.
We were already exceeding the budget amount.
Only through change orders.
But we didn't know that until we opened, no, we didn't know that until we opened the bids.
Right. And there were bids above this one.
Yes.
Did those bids include these?
No, they were all.
This was an add alt in the, in the request for bids, in the bid request.
Because when I, when I asked if we were going to value engineer this project, what would be cut? And you said, well, probably the, the berm with the slide would be cut, insinuating that that was included in the contract.
And I could have brought you this change order tonight with only the pump. And it's up to you. If you would like to cut the berm with the slide, then we can do that. We'll have a slide with no place to put it. So that, that's why this is before council. You can make that decision.
Again, why would we have a slide with no berm? Why wasn't that included in the original contract? Where were, what was the plan with the slide if we didn't include the necessary things to install the, the slide? I don't understand why this contract didn't include that in the first place.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, I'd just like to interrupt and make a comment. We are where we are right now with this playground. And maybe the budget didn't work out the way we wanted, but I think we're trying to actualize a savings by doing this. So we either have the choice to spend more money and pump it into the sewer, or we can just suck it up and realize this is the best way to save money in the future and the safest way because we're not losing, using a chlorinated system. And it may not sit well with any of us, but you know, the cake is almost baked and we got to put the last bit of frosting on and we might as well just move on at this point. It doesn't always work out that way. Sometimes you don't have enough money in your pocket to finish your vacation, but you figure it out and you go forward. So I'm not quite sure what the discussion is here.
Like I said, I support the idea. I'm just wondering why these, why we ordered a slide without a plan on where to install it, why we.
I think the plans were there.
Well, then we asked for the change order.
We ordered the equipment even before this went out to bid, so.
Right, exactly. My point.
And, and valid point, you know, Councilman Schreber, I'll point out that we're not always perfect. Could we have done it better many times throughout many projects? So, you know, I appreciate you calling our attention to it. You know, again, maybe it was, we were going to put in our own earth berm there in-house. I don't know. But by deprioritizing those other projects, I feel like there is a fair amount of budget authority to work with here with the council approval to deliver this as professionally and efficiently and environmentally responsibly as possible.
And, and just to be clear, you can take items. And and just to be clear, you can um, take items two and three out of the change order and I I understand what you're saying. We ordered a piece of equipment. But didn't require in the base bid, the work to install that equipment. It totally makes sense.
And not only that, I was told that if we had to value engineer, we would take that out. So that implied that it was in. And when in fact it was not.
Yep, no, I think it's a valid, um, I would, I would super respectfully ask that you. Um, consider that there is one, generally one person managing. Um, about a twelve million dollar project and I know that may seem small to some people on the council, uh, maybe seem very large. There are hundreds and hundreds of decision points being made and, uh, although it's not ideal and I wish Maeve were here. I I told her not to come tonight. Um, enjoy her long weekend, but um, yeah, we could have done better. I'm I'm sorry. I'm trying to get this project delivered with the best ADA accessibility we can. It's the project any of us inherited and. We have the budget authority through other savings to do it as proposed to the public.
And I I I can tell you that, um, you know, the the op- the bid opening process was. Very, it was a very anxious moment because we were ready and not looking forward to seeing bids all being well over a million dollars. Um, and that, that's where we would have. Poss- you know, what would that have meant? That's why I think the berm and the this, you know. Thirty-six thousand dollar additional alternative here to put that berm there was not included in the base bid. Because if those bids had come back and every one of them had been over a million dollars, this eight hundred and eighty one thousand dollars figure was. I mean, it sounds crazy because it's over budget from what was planned two years ago for this project when the grants were written. But it it was like a relief to the to the city staff because we're like, well, we can do this now. And that's why we brought only these two, I'm not even going to include the the pump, but the two additional. Um, alternatives for additional playground construction work to you when there were several others that we would like to have included. This was value engineering by cutting the additional almost hundred thousand dollars out of the the the. Changes that we would have liked to make. We're essentially trying to build in a bit of a contingency here at the eleventh hour.
Mr. Mayor, am I?
Uh, Councilwoman Rule.
Um, I just have a comment, a question, um, concern, that might even be Sarah. About the, um, since we're not going to be sending the water down the sewer. Um, I know when you're a private citizen, you're charged for sewer charges dependent upon how much water you use unless you prove that it didn't go down the sewer. So are we going to have to do a little code changing or take care of something, even though we're paying for our own water? Um, I think we need to make sure we track that properly.
That's a great question, Councilwoman Rule, and I didn't think about that, but you're right. If you're not aware, winter time. Winter time, um, sewage, uh, has a, uh, basically a methodology for determining. Uh, that based on your summertime average, I believe sewage, so.
Actually went away from that. For that exact reason, but we do. It's only using water, not going back down into the sewer.
Okay, perfect.
And we have that all over.
I forgot about the irrigation rate, but you're right. We do have the irrigation rate.
The rates of that are all part of the rate study and so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah, and thanks, Councilwoman.
Kind of brings up one more question I have for you. Is money set aside for maintenance? Doesn't sound like it. It's good, that's splash pad is going to take maintenance.
I think our parks maintenance budget is around one point three million dollars every year. I mean, it's, or sorry, a hundred and what is it? Couple hundred thousand dollars in parks maintenance budgets and this will be included in that. Yeah.
It's not even going to be used all year.
Nor are most of our parks used.
Blow it out and winter rides it. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what kind of utilization this splash pad gets considering we live next to LA, but.
I hope we learned a lot from this, is all, I guess.
Well, um, with that, any other questions from the council? Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Carol Curtis.
Hello, Ms. Curtis, good evening.
Hello, hello. So my name is Carol Curtis. I live in the city limits and I came this evening quite a bit. I learned quite a bit, so that was awesome. I was also at the Russell Center. Um, event that Jason spoke about earlier. It was awesome to meet the Russells. It went really well. It was really nice to be see. The facility and, um, I'm on the STA board and we were super excited to be invited. So we really appreciate being a part of that. I actually came tonight in support of this. Um, I wanted to say on behalf of the tennis that oftentimes information gets. Gummed up or passed along incorrectly and it was, I think, rumored that this money was going to be taken. To support the Russell Center and it's been made very clear to me that's not the case, which is great. Um, and yes, the courts aren't going to get paved, the tennis courts are not going to get resurfaced this year. But there's a lot of, given the timeline that we're on, a lot of logic to waiting. And the tennis community is okay with it. Okay, I mean, I can't say I spoke to seven hundred people tonight, but the tennis community is generally okay with it. I did speak to Kent Anderson, the coach of the team, and he's okay with it. So we just, you know, it's not necessarily that. I know anything about splash pads or what, or I don't have an opinion about all of this. But, um, I just think from the tennis community, we want to see the projects finished and if this is what it takes to get finished. Um, then that makes sense to us. Um, the only thing I would add about. And I'm really glad to hear this extra information about why it was going to be irrigated because I just learned about this irrigation yesterday, but the only. Minor thing I'll say is I really hope they put the pipes deep enough to deal with freeze. And also traffic and construction materials like you can't, I could comment about the maintenance, I think is a really valid comment. So I really support that and I do really support the analysis of bids. Because in some cases, it's not that we don't have to all pick up our boots and move forward, but we do have to hold our contractors accountable. And there are situations where by rereading our bids, people who are making millions of dollars need to be held accountable. And so thank you for for keeping each other accountable. Um, it is too bad Maeve's not here, but um, I do have a lot of respect for her and I'm glad you gave her the weekend off. Um, because I think she does have the most continuity in regard to all of this. Um, so I always look forward to hearing her comments and her professional approach to all this. So thank you. And uh, thanks for holding us all not in here, but in accountable in general. So have a great weekend, guys.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Um, I would undertake a motion for approval of the resolution for change order number one to agreement with Gino Construction Idaho for construction of inclusive playground. Splash pad at Travis Park City Agreement Number A twenty-four fifty-three hundred dash six.
So moved.
Second.
By Council President Rule, second by Dick. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howarth?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Schreger?
No.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
All right, um, we will now revert back to consent calendar item number five. That was removed for discussion and questions by Councilman Howarth. This is for proposed resolution professional service agreement with Tishabice for development impact fee study city agreement number eight twenty-four. Dash nineteen ten dash four. Um, just for the record, um, I did formally work for Tishabice. Um, as a fiscal analyst, I have no fiscal benefit or any kind of relationship with them. Um, anymore, uh, or as a result of this contract. Prior to working for them, when I was planning director, um, I administered the former development impact fee. Uh, study update and received several proposals. I at that point did not know Tishabice and I chose them. Because they are the pre- preeminent firm in the nation that does this. Um, and uh, that's one of the reasons I went to work for them because they're they're great, but. Uh, happy to stand for any questions you have on this, uh, Councilman Howarth.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, my question is, as I was reading the material, it sounded like, and correct me if I misinterpreted this. We only got one bid on the bid request.
That's correct.
I- is there a policy within the city that if you only get one bid that you have to continue to keep the bidding open? Or how how do you handle? I I presume we don't like single sourcing. Uh, so how do we handle a case like this?
Um, I defer to either Cheryl or the legal team.
Cheryl's on her way.
So it's not ideal when we only receive one proposal. This was an RFP, so it was, um, proposals received. Um, we went through the regular practice we always do, goes to plan centers, goes on our website. Notification was sent out to, um, a few firms, just notifying them of solicitation. And it resulted in only receiving one. That happens. It's not ideal, but there's no policy that says if if we're. Good with the proposal, that we can't accept that. Um, there's no policy about extending and and. You know, doing the process again, we can award to the one that was received and that's what we did here.
Yeah, and and uh, Councilman Howarth, I'd also add, uh, there's a couple of uh, elements of this one. It is a update to our existing development impact fee. Um, having worked on similar fees with other communities, one I've seen pricing for others and I was, uh, very. Very pleased with this pricing, or when I've seen from other uh, contracts that go out there. Secondarily, um, an update is to some degree a little bit easier by the firm that's doing it. They have all the models and the spreadsheets. Um, so it's, it's a little less work than someone bidding on a brand new impact fee study. Um, so in general, it's, um, uh, you know, it's, there are a couple of firms that do this in the West, but. Um, um, you know, it doesn't surprise me that we didn't see other other bidders on it.
And Cheryl, is there, is there a time criticality that would necessitate us to select? This bid or if we said, hey, take another two weeks or four weeks to see if we could get additional bids? Does that impact us in any way?
Uh, I'll, I'll speak to that, um, Commissioner, I mean, Councilman Howarth and legal might want to step in. Uh, under Idaho code, um, uh, we are, uh, required to update, um, our development impact fees every five years. Um, this was last done in two thousand and eleven, so there, uh, when I was a candidate, I pressed this issue numerous times. Uh, with the council and former mayor. Um, in my mind, it is critical that we start this ASAP because, uh, it could be viewed as. Um, a bit tardy since we haven't updated it since two thousand and eleven. Uh, I defer to legal on that.
Thank you. And as I was reading through again their their bid, uh, they had three different fees depending on the seniority of the. The consultant from two hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour to a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. I I forget the total number of hours that came up to their their bid, but is there any, within those nine tasks? Are there some of those activities where the city has expertise that we could go do the work to go reduce the total bid? Uh, amount. And I know there's an expertise in a lot of that.
Yeah.
But, uh, I mean, things like gathering information, there was eight or ten or twelve hours. I I mean, I I agree that there's some expertise we probably don't have, but within that, are there some areas where we could facilitate to help bring that down? And and my concern really is, we don't have a a competitive bid or bids to go say, this is the best, this is really. The right pricing. I hear what you say, based on your experience, you know it better than I do, but. If we had two or three bids and we said, hey, this is the lowest bidder, we might feel better about the pricing.
Yeah, and I, if I could just clarify that. Um, it was done in a, as an RFP because you don't want to award solely based on price because it's specialized. Knowledge, so this was not a bid to where we would be awarding by low bid. That's construction projects and commodities and such, but so this is different to where it gets evaluated on. Different factors that were all listed in the RFP and price is one. And obviously the lowest price gets the maximum number of points and they were the only ones that submitted, so. They would get the maximum number, but, um, their proposal and the services that were provided in there. Was what the city was looking for and needs within their expert.
Do, do we have any ability to internally estimate what these costs should have been?
Um, so I whiskey rock planning, my business, uh, I compete against Tishabice, actually one I brought it. Uh, over them, um, and, um, I can tell you, yes, we have the internal expertise. Um, it's not sounding, you know, ragish, but I could do this. I can tell you there are a ton of hours in it. Um, it's specialized, uh, because, uh, these can be challenged as our legal team knows. Sometimes they are challenged. One of the great things about Tishabice is I'm not aware of any impact fee they've done throughout the country and they do these all over the country. Uh, where they have lost a legal challenge to the proportionality and the methodology for the fees. Um, and then I think another thing that you may not be aware is when we collect our impact fees, uh, a portion of our impact fees are paid by. New users that go specifically to pay for the update of the fee. So these are not general fund dollars. These are impact fee dollars that have been collected in the past, uh, thirteen years to pay for the update of the study. Um, in in my mind, um, you know, uh, and I know the industry well. Um, again, I have no relationship or ben- financial benefit, but Tishabice is the gold standard.
Thank you. And if I could interject here for just a moment, um, the statute specifically requires that the, um, these types of. Studies are prepared by qualified professionals in fields relating to finance, engineering, plant, planning and transportation. So there's specific language on who can, um, perform these studies. In the statute. Thank you.
Yeah, good questions, Councilman Howarth. I appreciate them.
And I would add to that, that would be dangerous to have the, any of the data. Well, there's some data that can be collected internally by staff and handed over to Tishabice to assist with them. But we have to be really, really careful on the data collection so that there's not an accusation of manipulation at a later date.
Thank you.
And it's just a little more background, the way this process works, they'll be working with our development impact, our our directors. Um, our development impact fee advisory committee, which is the planning commission plus two additional members from the real estate or development community. It's a separate committee we have. Um, they will come in and first do, uh, an assessment of, uh, our building permits from the date of the last census. They give a very accurate, uh, existing population and population growth projection. They actually go through every building permit. And look at how many persons per household for single and multifamily. They'll do an assessment of all of our transportation system, looking at any roadways that we've added. Lane miles we've added. They'll look at our pathways to make sure our pathways, uh, we know what those are. Um, same with fire, um, uh, and police equipment that has a ten-year or more life expectancy. And then they'll divide all of that and give us a ratio of our level of service per person or per population. That then gets, uh, rolled back into each new, uh, residential unit or, uh, non-residential square foot, um, of commercial space. Um, the interesting thing about this proposal is it did include, uh, our request, uh, to look at stormwater as an impact fee category. We don't currently have that. It is not exactly clear right now how we will do that proportionality or how they will do that proportionality, but. That will potentially and hopefully be a new fee category. Um, you can talk with our legal folks offline about fees for stormwater because there've been some Idaho cases. Um, that are close by and relevant, but that's one of the big things I hope we can start to generate, um, uh, impact fee. Collections for our stormwater to help expand our system or maintain our level of service.
Thank you.
Uh, they will be coming to us at various times throughout this process. They'll initially be working with the impact fee advisory committee. They'll come to us for methodology. Um, to affirm the land use assumptions and the growth projections and then ultimately they'll present. At the end of this, they'll present the maximum legally supported impact fee that you have the ability to adopt. Um, that is not a requirement that you adopted at that level. Um, I'd love to talk to any of you offline of why it's beneficial to adopt it at the maximum legally apor- um, supported level. Um, because in short, if you don't do that, then we're pulling out a general fund to to fund our growth, so. Anyways, um.
Mr. Mayor, one question, question for you, and I think you were involved at this at some point, but anywhere as potentially as a body, our body. Or through this process, is there any way that we could get involved in terms of moving the needle for impact fees? To provide funding for the school system, our local school system?
Oh, that's my dream. Um, Councilman Dick, I've spoken to the governor two times directly on this issue and anyone else who will listen. It's been proposed in Idaho a couple of times. I still have never gotten a clear understanding of why this is one fee category that's excluded statutorily from development impact fee application in Idaho. It's commonplace in many other states and it is truly the one measure that ensures that our school system and school district can keep up with growth. It's fair, it's proportional. There are several entities out there working on this, Idaho Business for Education and others. It's a continual effort, we just need to educate our legislature on why this, this impact fee should be eligible. The only thing I've heard is that impact fees are administered by the municipality or the county or the district. Sometimes school districts overlap, you know, two cities and the county. So they are paid at the issuance of a building permit. So that can get fairly complex, knowing like who's collecting, where it's being reallocated to and held. So maybe that's a legitimate reason, but I tell you, that is the, the most fair and responsible way to expand our school system for our growing population, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Along the same lines, what, what would be the appropriate way for councillors to get involved in this process? I know there is some language that's going to be in our forthcoming comp plan about re, taking a better look at how we calculate these impact fees. And I know there's a lot of statutes involved and so.
The process itself, so the consultants will come in, as I mentioned, they'll meet with Sarah, our finance director, they'll meet with the fire, the police, parks, Jason, building. They collect that data and they set up an initial assumption, or they call it their level of service. They'll determine our existing acres of parkland per population. They come back with that initial brief, which is just sort of a check-in with the Impact the Advisory Committee. We can have that come to us as well, where they give a presentation, this is our assumptions, this is, they walk through all the numbers. Sometimes the council may need to establish that level of service, for example, for parkland. We may have, let's say, these are not real numbers, we may have one acre of park per 750 people. That could be our existing level of service that we feel is adequate. We may say that that's an overallocation, we think there should be one acre of park per 500 people. In that case, we have more parkland than we need. So through the methodology, you can actually repay yourself for the cost, called cost recovery, for buying more parkland than we think we need. So there are some issues that the council will establish our level of service and parkland would be one example of that, what is sufficient. But throughout this process, there are about three check-ins between the consultant and the Impact the Advisory Committee or the council. And I would imagine, you know, statutorily, the Impact the Advisory Committee simply needs to acknowledge and affirm and comment on the land use assumptions and the fees and the methodology. But it's, it's typical that the consultant will present to the council as well. So if the council would like more engagement in this than less, I'm sure we can arrange that.
I personally would, yes.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions from council or discussion? If not, entertain a motion to approve proposed resolution professional service agreement Tishabice for Development Impact Fee Study, City Agreement Number 824, 1910-4.
Removed.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Duquette, so the roll call vote.
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Dick?
Yes.
Councilor Duquette?
Yes.
Councilor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councilor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
And with that, I hope you all have a great Fourth of July, look forward to seeing you on the parade.
Nice try.
Thought you could sneak out of here.
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. That was. Next, we are going to talk about agenda item, discuss the policy promote public comments. That slipped my mind sincerely. So Councilman Schreiber, the floor is yours, so.
Actually, it was mine.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, he's, he was my second signature.
Okay, sorry, Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I just want to say that I understand the issues that brought your move to block Zoom response. But I also have to take.
Can I just correct that, we have not blocked it, it is still available?
Okay, stop it, I'm sorry, not blocked, you have limited it.
That's appropriate.
Okay. And I know that President Rule has said it has only happened two times since she's been here. I was here both of those times. The first one was a little tricky, but you, you stopped it, you and Melissa stopped the second one rapidly. I think limiting Zoom to every, to everybody with exceptions is akin to kind of like a couple of dog owners not obeying the leash law. And so you scrapped the whole thing, in my opinion. I campaigned on more public feedback, not less. I would like to have council meetings different days and times just to get more people. I know I'm having a hard time getting people to come as it is. I think that sometimes you cannot be 48 hours ahead, I appreciate that option. If I'm thinking I'm going to come to a meeting and it's 4:30 and my baby starts throwing up and I can't make it and now I can't Zoom, that's cutting off somebody's ability to participate. And to me, participation is what we need more of, not less of. I, I do know that in the P and Z meeting, that last one, that, what is he called, Hastings? He's the, I don't know what that position. Chairman. He let somebody come on at the end because he said he wanted to hear from everyone. And that person hadn't made plans ahead of time. So I just think it's respectful and necessary to allow less limiting. That makes sense, less limiting, not less blocking.
Are those your comments?
I guess they are.
Okay, I would love to just follow up with a couple of perspectives on those. First, from the Anti-Defamation League, 1221, 2023. Extremists have recorded more than 140 incidents nationwide in which public forums were disrupted by anti-Semitic speech or other trolling and harassment efforts. The magnitude and persistence of the harassment has prompted some city councils to discontinue or remove virtual public comments. I would point out that there's no legal requirement to take public comments at, at these business meetings outside public hearings. In my opinion, Zoom is a vestige of the COVID policies. We've now gone through that and people can attend in person, standpoint's a small community. Within a few minutes, anyone can make a meeting that's advertised in advance. Although I would say that Zoom does make sense for county meetings where people have to drive hours to get to a county at East Lake or something. In Sandpoint, prior to COVID, which I think we'd all like to forget, this is how cities functioned. I am going to draw on legal counsel in a moment, but there are some due process challenges with us using Zoom. The fact that we have it and allow it in certain circumstances does pose some, some challenging First Amendment issues. For me, it's hard to focus and run a meeting when there are Zoom bombers or others who do that sort of thing. I would point out that Dover does not have Zoom, I believe Hayden does not allow Zoom. It is a national, national trend, more cities are reverting to their pre-COVID public comment methods. And again, I just want to emphasize, we have not disallowed it, we allow it with prior consent for specific circumstances. Somebody were sick, had a conflict or, or traveling, we do allow that with their identity, identity confirmed by the clerk. So with that, you know, this is council decision, I'm all for transparency. I'm not for opening up our community in this forum to people from outside our community, from who knows where, to come and spew hateful language and distract my ability to run the meeting.
And I don't, I don't want that either, but I think to be able to expect everybody to give 48 hours notice that they would like to speak on Zoom to be an exception. You may have lost touch with some of the residents in our city. And we are Sandpoint, we are not Dover, we are not Hayden, we are Sandpoint. And I just, I just think I would compromise, something that I would think, if they can call in, if people can call in right before, if it's necessary, not 48 hours ahead. Like I said, I'm home, I'm ready, I'm coming into the meeting, my baby starts throwing up, I can't leave my baby, I was going to take my baby with me. Now I can't come and I can't talk because it's not 48 hours ahead.
So I appreciate that, Councilwoman Duquette. I just point out, one, written comments I was allowed to the council. Two, the 48 hours prior to a, a meeting are fairly involved. We are preparing packets, we are preparing documentation, we have limited staff. That's simply to give our staff the ability to process and identify the individuals. And then finally, I would just emphasize, I'm a huge proponent for public comment and transparency. I think if any of us were alive in 2019, we would recognize there's a very common way of doing business in our American government and that is to show up at a meeting and take advantage of the public forum, which is not a requirement of law. And again, I'd kick it over to Legal, if you have any comments on potential challenges with even having any Zoom comment related to the First Amendment.
I guess I would just keep it kind of short and sweet. First of all, there's, there's, this is up to the discretion of, of the decision makers, there's no requirement for Zoom comments. It's permitted, it's permitted, however. It does, having these kind of Zoom bombers come in and, and make comments at meetings, it does invite first, First Amendment challenges that probably don't otherwise need to occur. And so if we're cutting people off, we just are sort of exposing ourselves to First Amendment liability that we wouldn't otherwise need to. But that's just one consideration among many. And, and we can craft a policy and, and as strongly as we can to allow us to nip these in the bud when it occurs. It's just, it's just, we are incurring more liability.
Identify a number that has Zoom bombed, so that when it comes up, it just doesn't come on.
I sent you all an article today with a little bit of background on what's happening nationally on this issue. I think you'll find that there's not an individual member that's repetitively doing this. And my perspective is, if somebody wants to come and look me in the eye and say the things that I heard, that's fine. They have probably a First Amendment right to do that, but to do it from the cowardice of a undisclosed location, making up fake, fake addresses, I'm not a fan. But I, I 100% give this decision to the city council.
So let's hear.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I, my perspective is this, this body, legal staff worked extremely hard on our rules of decorum, when was it, a year ago or so? To make sure that these meetings were kept civil and I've been through, what, two years and seven months, I've been through all the Zoom bombers that have come in and yes, it's disruptive. But I, I definitely go back and don't want to limit someone's First Amendment rights to come in. I think Councilor Duquette's brought up some points, that there are times when you'd like to get to the meeting and you may not have 40 hours, 48 hours notice to be able to do it. I think Sandpoint is a small microcosm, there's a lot going on in the world today. Whether we agree with it or disagree with it, public comment is there for our community members to tell us, again, whether we like it or not. I don't think anybody from Boise or Washington DC is going to ride in on a, you know, a knight in shining armor is going to ever come in and save us. And I think some of those comments do help us make bigger decisions when we're looking down the road. And I would all for, I'd be in all for opening Zoom comments back up again. And just knowing that we may have to deal with Zoom bombers and be ready for what's to come.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Legal.
If the council's inclined to revert back to Zoom commentary, I would respectfully request that we not allow Zoom comments without arrangements being made ahead of time on land use matters on public hearings. It's difficult to identify that the person is who they say they are, whether or not they're actually an affected party, which is legally defined and required for the appellate process and land use planning. And so I would request that, that land use related matters and public hearings related to land use specifically require in-person testimony because those also allow well ahead of time written comments to be considered as part of the record, which doesn't prohibit somebody from providing their information with, you know, a sick baby or something along those lines. So my request would be, at the very minimum, if the council's leaning towards allowing the Zoom commentary, that it not be allowed as public testimony for land use related matters.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Rule?
I think it's an overreaction. And I would agree with Councilor Dick in that we spent a lot of time on those rules of decorum. I would also agree with Legal that if there are certain circumstances for land use decisions, which can be very, can't say that word, litigious?
Litigious.
Litigious, never can say that word. That we do add to our current rules for how we manage that. And then the other comment I had is if someone submits a written comment and they're watching the meeting through Zoom and because of our discussions, they, we sway their opinion or they change their mind because there's new information, not necessarily on planning issues, of course, absolutely not in that sense, but anything else we're making decision on and that person would like to then make an additional comment and say, whoa, I didn't realize that. I changed my mind, I just want you guys to know, I'm either a yay or a nay on that. I, I think that's an important option for people. I believe that individuals with disabilities struggle to get here. Of course, they could call ahead of time, but you know, things come up. So again, just to reiterate, I think being the longest standing council member, the, the amount of times that we've actually been bombed is, is very, very small compared to the number of hours I've sat in these meetings over the years. And so I feel at this point it's an overreaction. I would be open to, at a further point, if it becomes problematic and it, it is interrupting every single meeting or it becomes a once a month type of thing, that as any decision we make up here, we can always come back and reassess that at that point. But I do not think it is necessary right now.
Thank you, Council President Rule, I, I have a question for the council and for Legal. So assuming you revert back to our previous standards and policy, a hypothetical caller calls up, we have our rules of decorum that say do not make derogatory statements about others. If somebody were to go off about purple elephants, let's say, and start saying their beliefs about purple elephants, purple elephants not being a purple elephant, but being a race or other characteristic of a human being. How do I know when to cut them off without violating their First Amendment rights? And uncertain of that and fearful of litigation, do I let that garbage spew for their full three minutes? And are you comfortable with that? Because it could be pretty ugly and when I'm going to look at Melissa and say, do not cut them off unless that gentleman or that woman over there, our attorney, stand up and say, they've violated some policy. So I just want you to know, you may subject to us to, you know, some pretty, pretty offensive speech, in my opinion, but it is free speech and if we're opening it up, that's a First Amendment right.
Well, we're all adults here, I would say, and we've probably all heard just about as ugly as it can get. And I believe if there's a derogatory statement made against anyone here on the council, name-calling, that that's in our policy, that we can cut that off.
Barring that.
But I have been up there, up here, sitting again, as long as I have and have not. and have not experienced that. Now I've experienced that in person at one point. Um, and we did not have a strict policy to cut the person off. Um, but eventually they were escorted out. Um, I'm willing until it becomes problematic to um, put ourselves out there to hear what people have to say.
As a follow-up, um, and I guess that Legal, I mean, what I am interpreting is there's a pretty fuzzy line of when I could cut someone off unless they call me a punk or some other clearly derogatory language towards myself, staff member or council. Is that generally?
That's more or less the liability that I was referring to is it just gets really into the weeds. It's a retrospective analysis, so you can't really prepare for it. I mean, you can plan for it, but uh, when, when, if someone sues and it comes to the courts, it, it's, it's a retrospective analysis. And so you can't really budget for all the liabilities.
Yeah. Um, and, and I just, and I'll let you go in a count, in a moment. Um, kind of a broader question, we ask on our public comment forums, whether you're a resident of the city. My recollection was that was something Helen Newton implemented back in two thousand and eight. Um, and the purpose of that was because she very seriously differentiated between her constituents and people who are not her constituents. And without the ability to look someone in the eye, identify that they are a city resident. Um, do we even care about that anymore? Do we, are we, are we interested in comments from people from Kalamazoo or, you know, Dufort Road or things like that? So I just pose that as another question because they seem similar in my mind. Um, who do we represent? Who are we accountable for and whose opinions are gonna drive our decisions?
And so I would agree, I'm sorry. Well, currently, we in person listen to anyone who comes to the mic. We do differentiate if they're a city resident or not. And so I don't see what your point is relative to Zoom unless we're gonna start to differentiate and only allow Sandpoint citizens to speak at that mic.
Someone from Florida could call in, someone from Texas could call in.
And someone could show up for vacation and decide to come to our council meeting because it's Fourth of July week and, and speak to whatever, but they're not here right now. So the odds of that really happening, again, I've been sitting up here for a really long time and that's just all conjecture. It's not factual. So I would rather base it upon the historical context of what we've experienced here than what might happen. It's sort of like, ooh, I'm afraid, I'm scared. And um, yeah, something can happen, absolutely. But if it becomes really raw and uncomfortable and unproductive, then I think at that point, like I said previously, we revisit it. But I do not feel it has reached that point.
Could, could we, could we make it have to be about city business? Could that be a stipulation on the Zoom?
I, I imagine somebody could convert and twist uh, their statements in some way to.
And the, the public forum is explicitly about anything, not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, but the, to deal with the city, people don't come in here and just start talking about the traffic in Florida. I mean, it, it relates to what's going on here. You know, not just, not just on the agenda, but people want to talk about things that are going on in the community. And the, I, I wanted to say something that um, Helen did respond. I asked for some information and she said she agreed with you, I'm just sharing. Um, and she wanted us to check voter registration. And so that's what you had said, that she was wanting constituents only in the city. Um, and, and I'm, so I'm just sharing because she did share with me. And I, when I said you, I feel you've lost touch with residents, I was, sometimes I come off stronger than I need to. But what I mean is, everybody can't just pick up and come to these meetings. It, it's just not, it, and that would be a lost touch of people that cannot do that. Everybody just doesn't get to, you know, it's a small community, but things like.
If this were twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting, would that make you feel any differently? Arranging comment.
Uh, yeah, that's what I said, that, I could deal with that because, well, no, because immediately, all of a sudden my kid's sick, I can't come, I just can't come. And I don't have a chance now to say anything and I get the world is crazier.
I, I'm not gonna die on a hill on this, like I said, it's council's. I, I would like to clarify before you come to a conclusion and a direction for me. Um, on the land use hearing aspects, I would add one other thing that our legal counsel is aware of. Um, and I didn't hear it, but because of due process in a hearing, uh, opponents and applicants get to hear all evidence um, on the record. Um, in the worst case scenario, if somebody's Zoom were disrupted on their home internet, um, we have a decision on a hearing, they could allegedly appeal that decision and make us do a whole nother hearing because they said they didn't hear the evidence on the record. So I, I strongly agree on land use hearings. Um, I think it's a flaw, it's something that was adapted during COVID. Um, I think for land use hearings, it's imperative that uh, everyone, opponents and applicants hear the record very clearly and you can't do that on Zoom. So I would at least uh, ask you to move in that direction, but.
The best way.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, I know I'm new to the, to the council, um, and I am all in favor of having public input. Um, at the same time, this council ran quite smoothly and effective before Zoom was implemented for many, many years.
You'd have to ask somebody who was here, I guess.
It worked, right? We're saying we're afraid of two or three people coming on Zoom and bombing us. But likewise, I haven't heard in my short time here, but even living here in the community, I do not hear an outpouring from the citizens that say, we cannot have our voice heard. It would be interesting, we don't have many public people here. But are we overreacting in the, on the, on the, the fear of your hypothetical of a mother wanting to come and her baby gets sick? I, I get that, things happen. But there are many, many opportunities. And quite honestly, if you want to impact my vote, come to this meeting, have a discussion, meet me afterward is much more effective than simply calling in and giving three minutes of a Zoom call. So if the intent of the public is to influence my decisions, come in front of me, have a meeting with me before or after is much more effective. But given the history of this community, not using Zoom, these meetings were effective. The council ran, has run without it, was implemented only because of COVID. Um, I, I think it's a crutch to say we need it. And so uh, I, I hear all the other challenges with Zoom, but um, I, I just wanted to convey, I want input, but face to face to me is much more impactful than somebody calling over Zoom.
Thank you, Councilman Howard. Uh, any other council discussion or?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
So I, I should start by saying that I, you know, derogatory, vitriol and hate has no place in this community. And I did read that article that you shared from the, um, that you shared. And I was actually quite encouraged because most of the things that it recommended that uh, communities do, we have already done. And I think, you know, President Rule and Counselor Dick made a good point that we do have a very robust uh, decorum policy that allowed you to handle the situation pretty handily. And so um, I agree with those who think that uh, a few bad actors shouldn't ruin it for the entire community. And in fact, perhaps allowing them to do that is letting them win.
Um, any other council discussion? Uh, so it's not an action item, I don't believe.
No.
Um, so I would take a, uh, what's the great phrasing? And, and.
I, I guess I asked for sort of, at one point I had to ask for sort of an implied.
Impplied, yes. Uh, I, I guess implied consent.
And I don't think that council should take an affirmative, that we have the um, a good uh, grip on the uh, intention of council and we can come back with uh, however we're gonna move forward with.
Okay, and um, just uh, for, for just my thermometer, um, Councilman Rule regarding the land use, Zoom use, land use hearings, are you generally um, what's your position on that?
Well, legally with land use, there are a lot of things that we have to do um, differently um, because of the nature of those, um, their judicial decisions as opposed to regular legislative decisions. So I think the set of rules, um, um, I likely I would defer to law to create anything that they feel is necessary.
That's a great distinction. And I think maybe the direction to lean if council's in favor is that any quasi judicial hearing would require written or in-person testimony as outlined in the statute and would not have Zoom testimony without a very specific exception, which I think the only one you have in your city code right now would be anyone who wasn't allowed to come into.
Yeah, trespass.
And I guess the other exception would be is if um, a land owner had to, um, if one of the parties had to join the meeting through the applicant or someone else, correct? Yes, so just that piece of it. And while I have the mic, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to apologize to Counselor Howard. I was not laughing at you, but I've been in plenty in-person meetings where it's been far more um, insulting and disruptive than I have experienced any Zoom comments. And, and I was just laughing at myself in that perspective of going back to remember those. So um, it wasn't anything directed at you, my apologies.
Not a problem.
Thank you, uh, President Rule. So um, is there any uh, any council member who would take a opposing view on the land use, Zoom use, land use hearings, quasi judicial?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, um. Is there a way to accomplish it by giving a disclaimer that they're not guaranteed uh, comment or all of the, because my understanding was the county grappled with this recently and they were able to come up with a disclaimer that if you must be heard or must hear, you must be here. Whereas if it's not crucial, you, you're, you can join from home. We just can't guarantee that you'll be allowed to speak or hear everything.
So are we talking about allowing people to observe the meeting via?
Yeah, I have no problem with observing, but if they want to be on the record.
Right.
I think that's a question.
They're still going to be allowed to observe via Zoom. I don't think anybody has even suggested that that not be allowed any longer. We are only talking about either public comment or as we've identified now in quasi judicial hearings, public testimony.
So I, the question is, I think um, Fonda, the county has a disclaimer up. Uh, I haven't ever read it in detail. Um, but it says something to the effect that if you are going to give public testimony, participate in this hearing via Zoom, there's some catchall that you're due process and whatever rights.
I don't think there's any.
I can answer that. So I, I have two hesitations to that. First of all, the due process is all about notice and hearing. And, and I have a problem with a disclaimer to the hearing component of it, like notice and maybe you'll be able to be heard. Um, and then the second component, the second concern that I have with that is that uh, it particularly in land use matters, the interested parties have standing in the land use matters. So people that are afforded notice under eighteen sixty, uh, sixty-seven, sixty-five oh nine, um, they have standing to be heard. And if they, if people can just uh, testify over Zoom and say, yeah, I, I live at this address, but we can't really verify that, that, that muddies the record significantly, especially when we're trying to make a transcript for Zoom or sorry, for a, a reviewing court who's looking this over. So it's much easier to verify their, their identity when they're in person.
I understand that. Um, do we currently verify when somebody during a land use hearing says that they're a resident or a neighbor? Do we verify that?
I don't think we ask for their identification, I don't think we ask to see their driver's license, but uh, it's just easier to, to know who they are.
Well, and we at least have them here filling out a form that they leave as a part of the record. They sign in and they fill out a form to speak.
Right. And there is an online form to join through, through Zoom, correct?
I believe it's just sending the clerk a request.
Mr. Mayor, there is a form.
Oh, there's.
It is not possible though, if I may interject, to confirm and or to indicate on Zoom when we're taking public comment from those who are uh, you know, in favor or opposed, et cetera. I can't organize those on Zoom. Um, that's just one of the challenges.
Thanks.
So uh, with that discussion, um, is there any council member who, well, I, I wants to speak on, on the, the quasi judicial use of Zoom? Uh, I, my inclination right now is to work with Legal to rein that in and uh, require physical presence unless arranged prior for um, testimony.
I'd be open to that.
Okay, good. So I will um, instruct staff to reopen Zoom, that's what I'm hearing. Um, with Councilman Howard's um, uh, not supportive of that, it seems like the rest of you are. Um, and um, we'll proceed. Um, with that, now I will adjourn the meeting with no further business at eight sixteen. PM, have a great Fourth of July, everyone.